Okay, would everyone please be seated? We are going to start with the program. Attention, everyone. It is time to start the town meeting. I am not, at this point yet, calling the official town meeting to order. This is the informal part of the town meeting before we actually get to the warrant articles. We will start with a moment of silence. We want to recognize and honor Edie McCracken, who passed away recently. Many of you in the room know, knew Edie. Edie grew up on Glenn Olden Farm in Westbrook Field and graduated from David Proudy High School in 1952. She was accepted into the Delta Airlines Stewardess Training Academy in Texas and, with her pilot's license, was set to go until she met Bill, also a licensed pilot, and married in 1953. They moved to Westwood in 1958. Bill took a teaching job at Wentworth Institute of Technology while Edie went directly to work for the assessor's office for the town of Westwood for 13 years. Edie then went on to become the town clerk for 37 years, retiring in 2007. Every paycheck Edie ever received was signed by the town of Westwood. Edie was also a justice of the peace, a special police officer, held a Class A firearms license, requalifying at age 80. She took great pride in her service to the town of Westwood, but her greatest joy was being the best-ever Grammy to Ryan and Jake, her adored grandchildren. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Edie McCracken. The next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of elected officials, which Dottie Powers Good evening. Congratulations to all of our town officials who were elected to town offices at the annual town election held on Tuesday, April 25th. At this time, we would like to recognize you by asking that you come up to the stage when your name is called. Once everyone has come up to the stage, I will administer the oath of office. Mark F. Murphy, assessor. Is Mark here? Mary Beth Pearson, Board of Library Trustees. And Maureen Murphy-Von Ue, Board of Library Trustees. Alice E. Moore, moderator. Brian D. Gorman, planning board. Charles L. Donahue Jr., school committee. Joseph A. Joudi, can't be here tonight. Michael F. Walsh, selectman. Frances X. McPherson Jr., sewer commission. And Albert F. Wizielko, tax collector. Is Al here? Okay, I think we have everybody that's here. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully, according to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of the office in which I was elected to in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Westwood and the laws of the Commonwealth. Thank you all for your time and commitment to the Westwood community. Great, so the next item on the agenda is the John Cronin Public Service Award. And I recognize Nancy Hyde, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, everyone. The John J. Cronin Public Service Award Committee annually awards Westwood's highest honor to an individual who has been remarkable in service to the community. John J. Cronin, Town Treasurer, for many years selflessly gave of his time and expertise for the betterment of the community, both as an elected official and in numerous volunteer activities. To recognize the spirit of community involvement illustrative of John Cronin's life, it is with immense pleasure we announce James J. Gavin as the 15th recipient of the John J. Cronin Public Service Award. Would Jim join me up here, please? I'll also be joined by John Cronin Jr. Highlights of Jim's public service include some of the following. He's done so many things, I'm gonna provide some prime highlights for you, Jim. Jim served on the Finance Commission from 1997 to 2002, having also served as chairman for one of those years. During this time, Jim contributed to the review of the proposed new high school, which we're now in. In 2002, then Treasurer John Cronin stepped down from his elected position. The Board of Selectmen appointed Jim to serve as interim treasurer, and he was subsequently elected in April of 2003 and has served in this position ever since. After winning the election, Jim worked with the staff to issue the $45 million bond for the high school, the largest bond ever issued by the town. In 2012, Jim led the financial team through a process called refunding, which essentially means we refinanced the balance due on the high school bond, and that refinancing saved the town $2.7 million in interest. In his 15 years as treasurer, Jim has overseen the issuance of over $95 million in bonds for various school and municipal projects. With his knowledge and expertise and understanding of municipal bonds, the town repeatedly secures funding at very favorable terms. In 2014, this led to the town's credit rating being upgraded to the highest level, a AAA bond rating. Jim's leadership and guidance over the years was a significant contribution to the town achieving this rating. As treasurer, not that he had enough to do, he did other things. He also has participated and provided valuable guidance on the Aid to the Elderly and Infirmed Committee, the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, the OPEB Liability Task Force, and the Budget Steering Committee. I also want to make note that Jim is a lifelong resident of Westwood. He and his wife Diane have four children, some of whom I think are here tonight, Jim. Are they here? Up in the corner there, Caitlin, Jimmy, Kevin, and Danny, and their grandson Keegan. His biggest proud woman. On behalf of the John J. Cronin Public Service Award Committee, it is my pleasure to present this prestigious award to James J. Gavin and add his name to the plaque which is on display at Town Hall listing all previously honored individuals. And this is signed by myself and my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I understand that people couldn't hear me before. I am losing my voice a little bit, but hopefully if you do have trouble, please do speak up. Can everybody hear me now?
No.
No, still not?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure how much more I can work with this mic. All right. I'm just gonna put... The next item up is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will invite young men from Troop One, Nick Fusco, Liam Hutton, Charlie Rusker, and George Rusker. And from Troop Three, Matt Montalto and Mark D'Angelo. Please come up on the stage and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to welcome you all to town meeting, and the business portion of the meeting cannot start before 7:30. So I will take my moment now, since at the end of the evening it's often quite hectic, to thank those folks who make this night possible and work very hard throughout the year to do so. And I will start with the Finance and Warrant Commission, led by Marian LeBlanc and Mike O'Hara, a true team of folks that work through every article on the agenda to make a recommendation to this town meeting so that this town meeting can vote. To Town Clerk Dottie Powers, Teresa Weir, and her team, which includes all the check-in folks, the registrars, and the vote counters. Not easy to keep this train running and make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, so very much appreciated. Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Planning Board, Town Administrator and Finance Team. And special thank you to Town Council Tom McCusker, who keeps me honest in every way and also advises us throughout the year in many ways, small and large. Assistant Moderator Paul Fitzgerald. And we have a special guest appearance tonight from Tony Antonellis, who is our overflow moderator. We are very grateful that he is back. I was embarrassed to ask him to perform that function, but he was really happy to do it, so hopefully he's keeping order in the visitors' room. I do also want to take a moment to remind folks that we are anticipating a lot of registered voters here tonight, and so visitors are in the Little Theater, which is adjacent to this, the high school auditorium. Visitors are not able to speak at town meeting, only registered voters are. And so I just do want to take a moment to make sure that all of our visitors are in the Little Theater. And if you have any questions about that, ask folks in the back of the room where you need to go. As your moderator, I, and this is my fourth term, for which I am very appreciative and honored to serve, I appoint the Finance and Warrant Commission, the Permanent Building Committee, and the Personnel Board, and would be happy to hear from any of you who are interested in joining those important boards. I'm gonna just take a break for a few minutes, and we will start the business portion of the meeting directly at 7:30. That should be okay. You really can't hear me up there?
I can.
I'm a little taller than most. Okay. That should be okay. You really can't hear me up there? I'm the worst person out. It's hard to move, so. I'm a little taller than most. That should be okay. You really can't hear me up there? It's hard to move, so. I'm a little taller than most. You really can't hear me up there? I'm the worst person out. Rules of speaking. Under our town bylaws, any person who wishes to address the town meeting shall stand and wait to be recognized by the moderator. The speakers shall confine themselves to the question under consideration. If I miss anyone who strongly desires to speak and has something new to speak about, please go to the microphone. Everyone who speaks will have that opportunity. Microphones are located again at the front, and mobile microphones are with folks at the sides. When addressing the meeting, you must state your name and address. This is required for the record. I ask that you state your point and allow for comment. I will limit repetitive comments. If you hear my gavel, you must stop speaking. When addressing the meeting, I will announce what type of vote is required by the voters: a majority, or special vote of two-thirds or four-fifths in certain circumstances. So for example, zoning amendments require two-thirds votes. Please note that a motion to reconsider may only be voted on the same night the article was voted. Reconsideration requires a two-thirds vote of those present and voting. This means that if there is a second night of this town meeting, warrant articles already voted on this evening may not be reconsidered. Before each vote, I will explain what vote is required. I will then ask for the ayes and nays. Where the decision is clear, I will call the vote. If I think there is any doubt, I will ask for a standing vote. For first, those in favor; next, those against. Once the vote is counted, I will announce the results. There are several items on the agenda this evening, which will have presentations. We will start with, and I am aware that presentations will come on Articles 1 to 12, Article 20, 22, 23, from the Planning Board report, Articles 24 to 32, and 33 to 35. We will start with a presentation from Nancy Hyde, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, who will provide an overview. She will be then followed by Pam Dukeman, who will speak to Articles 1 to 12.
Good evening again, everyone, and thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. We'll get the technology going here in a moment. And there's your presentation.
(laughter)
Okay. Well, there we go. Great. Again, thank you for coming tonight, and sorry for that little momentary glitch. Before I start, I just want to say, if you look back at this seal, and it's a little foggy, but we just celebrated the 120th anniversary of the town of Westwood, if you look at that, on April 2nd, so that's a pretty big milestone. Anyway.
(applause)
Gaytown. The articles presented here tonight reflect months of work from staff, of which we have an extremely talented Department of People, both in the municipal side and the school side, our elected officials, volunteer boards, and the public. We continue to be very fortunate in Westwood to have so many people willing to engage in productive work that benefits the entire community. Before I summarize the articles for you tonight, I would like to provide a brief update on University Avenue activities and several financial accomplishments. University Station has proven to be of great benefit to the town. It has allowed us to sustain services, moderate the growth in tax bills, and invest capital in our facilities and equipment. This includes our ability to invest in the new police and fire stations, both having been funded within Proposition 2 and 1/2, which means that no override was necessary for either project. The fire station is due to come online this summer, and the new police station at the end of this year. A couple of highlights taking place at University Avenue include a new Marriott Residence Inn, which is under construction. If you drive near the Amtrak Station, you see the hotel under construction. That's scheduled for completion this fall. A Del Frisco restaurant will be built on land closest to the MBTA Amtrak Station, and a new Brigham and Women's Medical Facility is going through the permitting process with the Planning Board. Of the 130 acres that make up all of the University Station project, there remains only 20 acres still available for future development. In addition to the very strong real estate tax revenues generated by University Station, the town also receives meal tax revenue, with a substantial portion of the meals tax coming from restaurants located at University Station. Hand in hand with the good news from University Station is the stability we have been able to achieve in the town's operating budgets, as we recovered from the Great Recession. Even during the recession, we successfully sustained the high quality of services with our schools, the Department of Public Works, and our public safety departments. Additional strengths worth noting include the town adding to its stabilization accounts and to the Rainy Day Fund. These accounts will buffer the town in the future through inevitable economic swings. We have made strides in terms of funding annual capital maintenance, as well as establishing regular funding to reduce the town's long-term OPEB obligations, and OPEB stands for Other Post Employment Benefits.
Yeah.
Through all we have accomplished, we have successfully protected the town's AAA bond rating. So as we make investments in buildings, such as the police and fire stations, the town is borrowing at extremely low interest rates. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to vote on thirty-nine articles. As we do at each town meeting, I'll provide a summary of the categories of this year's articles, and I'll take a moment to walk through them with you. Articles 1 through 12 will be presented by Ms. Dukeman, our Finance Director. We will vote on the fiscal year 2018 operating budget, stabilization accounts, payments towards OPEB, a series of capital expenditures, which are primarily funded with free cash. And for those who don't know the term "free cash," that reflects the remaining unrestricted funds that are available for appropriation. We are also proposing action to provide offsets to your annual taxes. What we accomplish now would not be possible if not for the years of hard work on the part of so many, even before University Station came along. Articles 13 through 18 are all roadway and infrastructure-related articles. We have two that address road acceptances, an article that will allow the town to accept Chapter 90 funding from the state, and two articles facilitating the construction of improvements at the Clapwood Tree/Washington Street intersection. Article 18 continues the Complete Street Program, which brings in grant money to provide safe mobility for all users of the street. This would include bikers, pedestrians, drivers, and transit vehicles. Article 19 is an amendment to the general bylaw regulating public consumption of marijuana. Article 20 is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, bringing language up to date with new state definitions regarding marijuana establishments. Articles 36 is an amendment to the Code of Westwood regarding noncriminal disposition of bylaw violations, and that will be followed by Articles 37 through 39, which provides specific allowance for liens to be placed on properties where there have been violations issued by the Building Department, Health Department, or Conservation Department. And any such action to place liens would be subject to joint review by the chairs of the Board of Selectmen, assessors, and the Town Treasurer. There are three petitioner articles before you tonight. Article 21 is intended to halt any taking down of homes for a period of three years with limited exclusions. Articles 22 and 23 are both intended to change zoning previously approved at town meetings by town meeting members. The proposed change in Article 22 would eliminate any future residential use on Washington Street and High Street in the commercial districts. The change in Article 23 would eliminate the flexibility to consider as contiguous or adjoining any parcels or parcels separated by roadways and railways. As noted in, and most of you should have this, or have received it at home, in the Finance Commission's report on Articles 22 and 23, on pages 36 and 37, careful and thorough consideration of these articles has taken place by multiple town groups. All have recommended indefinite postponement, which is the equivalent of recommending that you not approve Articles 22 and 23. I would like to note that because of these articles coming before town meeting, the Board of Selectmen needed to consider what action to take to protect the town's ownership interests in properties located near the Washington Street and East Street intersection. This, so you know, is the area near the new fire station. Our deliberations were challenging. In the end, a majority of the board voted in favor of taking steps to keep the zoning in place, also known as a zoning freeze, for a small but very important portion of Washington Street involving town-owned properties. In other words, we have preserved the town's ability to continue evaluating this portion of Washington Street under the zoning which is already in place. Articles 22 through 30, excuse me, 24 through 32 are all zoning articles brought forward by the Planning Board. The Planning Board Chair will provide the board's recommendations on all zoning-related articles. The recommendations will reflect their votes taken after holding public hearings. These articles between the 24 and 32 range from accessory apartments, to earth material movement, to penalties for noncriminal complaints. Articles 33 through 35 reflect the proposed updates to the role of Fire Chief. The Board of Selectmen created a task force in January, charged with studying the Fire Chief position and making recommendations for any changes considering recent updates made by the town meeting to the charter, removal of the Fire Chief position and department from civil service, and to continue to take steps to professionalize the town's management structure. There are three articles. Articles 33 revokes the vote from the special town meeting back in 1946. The following two articles update the reference to the Fire Department in the charter, and adds a new section in the charter detailing the role of the Fire Chief. I'd like to take a moment now to acknowledge our Fire Chief, Bill Scobal, who has served admirably as our chief for the past 21 years, and has been on the Fire Department for 41 years. Chief Scobal, who has been a strong, reliable leader, providing safety and security throughout the community, will be reaching mandatory retirement age in January 2018. I'd like you to join me in providing a round of applause to our Fire Chief, Bill Scobal. I believe he is in the house, and I'm sure he just heard you, so thank you to Chief Scobal. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would also like to acknowledge and thank members of our Finance and Warrant Commission for their very hard and diligent work. I also want to extend our appreciation to members of the town boards and commissions, and to our town meeting attendees tonight, and in past years, who take the time to understand the recommendations before them, and for the support that you all show the town. Lastly, another moment, I would like to take a moment to thank Superintendent John Antonucci. He has served as our, in our school system, as superintendent for the past 12 years. John will become superintendent in Duxbury in July. John, we thank you for all you have done to provide the children of Westwood with an outstanding education. So to close, the selectmen look forward to working towards a successful year, again, next year, and I would now like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Pamela Dukeman, the town's Finance Director. Thank you.
So just before Ms. Dukeman starts, every voter will have to have a seat, so please do be seated. There should be no visitors in this room, and if we have overflow of voters, voters will go to the Little Theater. If there's an overflow beyond that, we do have room in the cafeteria. But right now, we're fine in the Little Theater, so please, for those of you who do not have seats, please do take a seat. Ms. Dukeman.
Good evening. Pam Dukeman, 57 Sexton Ave., and I'm the Finance Director for the town. Each year at town meeting, we'd like to take a few moments to provide you with some background information on our finances, as you consider the financial articles that you'll vote tonight. The articles that you vote tonight will address a wide range of areas of the town's finances. As shown on the slides, there are multiple areas that we need to address each year as part of the budget process. Those, that does include our operating budget, which is our main funding for our annual school and municipal operating services. That is the most important area of our budget, and the area that most people are most familiar with. However, we do also have to make sure that we're taking care of other areas in the budget. We need to make sure we're addressing our capital budget, providing funding for our buildings and facilities and equipment. We need to make sure we have appropriate reserve accounts to protect the town in case of emergency, and to help with our credit rating. We also need to address our long-term liabilities, such as our pension and OPEB liabilities, and we need to balance all of that against the tax bill impact, trying to provide for all of that in our budget. What is that doing to the tax bill? Our Board of Selectmen, Finance and Warrant Commission, and our town meeting members have worked very hard the last few years to make sure that we're addressing all of these areas in our budget process. And you will see that again tonight, as you go through the articles, that they will address this wide range of areas. We do work under a very challenging financial model. The pie chart shows our revenue estimate for FY '18. As shown in the blue, we are funded 80% by our real estate tax revenue. We get very limited state aid, and we have very limited other revenue that we can rely on. Further, that main revenue source is limited and dictated by the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2. So it can be very difficult for us to provide the level of services that community desires, working within this challenging financial model. One item that does help us with that model is commercial value. Strong commercial value can help us as more revenue is paid, of that pie piece we looked at, more of that tax revenue can be paid by our commercial properties, and alleviate the burden on our residential homeowners. The line graph shows you commercial value as a percent of total value in town over a number of years. Looking on the far left side, in the early 90s, commercial value represented almost 25% of the value in town. We saw a pretty continual decline in that over the years, as our main commercial property area went vacant, and our residential value remained very strong. In recent years, on the right, we in fact dropped down to a historic low of 12 and 1/2%. We have certainly been helped in recent years by the University Station project. That new value coming online has helped us increase, the first increase in a number of years, and now currently, commercial makes up about 14.8% of the total value in town. What's further important with that is that our commercial value is taxed at a higher rate than residential. We have in town what's called a split tax rate. We have in town what's called a split tax rate, where we have a different and higher rate for commercial value. In our current year, our residential tax rate is $14.57 per $1,000 of value. The commercial rate is $28.20 for that same $1,000 in value, so our commercial property pays much more for their same value in town. Further, the commercial property does not participate in some of the main expensive services that we as a town provide, that any town provides, and that includes our school department, our trash collection services, and our snow and ice removal. We do not provide any of those services for the commercial property. So, the commercial property, as shown on the right, shown on the left pie, while they are 14.8% of the value, in the current year, they will pay, as shown on the right in the blue pie piece, 25% of the total tax bill. So, again, commercial is paying 25% of the total taxes of our main revenue source and yet not participating in many of our main services. This does provide a significant savings, this split tax rate, to our average homeowner. This bar graph shows you the current real estate bill in town. In green, for our average home valued at about $598,000, the current bill is just over $8,700. If we did not have a split rate and instead had a single rate, that bill would be much higher, as shown in blue, over $9,900. A $1,200 increase in the bill or 13%. So, that split rate is providing significant savings to our homeowners, and that is, again, worth about $1,200 in our current year. The University Station project has certainly helped with retaining that strong commercial value and helping us maintain that split tax rate, but it has also provided important new tax dollars and revenue to the community. The table here shows the actual new tax revenue we have gotten from University Station since that project began. In FY15, $565,000. In FY16, $3.2 million. In FY17, $1.1 million. Our estimate for FY18 is $500,000. That estimate will not be finalized until the fall, when the final valuation is done. So, over a four-year period, almost $5.5 million in new tax revenue. And it is important to note that while there is still further development to happen down there, we will certainly see a moderation to this revenue. Now, before we even got this revenue, our Board of Selectmen, our Finance and Warrant Commission, our Long Range Financial Planning Committee was working on what would be the best plan to make sure we took in this revenue and made sure that it could reach all areas of our budget, that we were responsible with this new money. A plan was set out to make sure that we addressed several areas of the budget, as shown on the slide. Starting on the left, first was direct service costs. We knew from the impact studies done when the University Station project was being considered that there would be some direct impact to certain services, and in particular, that would be public safety, police and fire, and perhaps the schools. We needed to make sure that we allocated some revenue to handle any of that increase in service. Moving along, second, operating budgets above Proposition Two and a Half. As I said, it's difficult for us in many years to provide the desired level of service and the desired budgets for the school and municipal operating budget. We knew that we could use some of the University Station money to help us do better with those annual budgets without having to request an operating override. Third, we wanted to use some of the money to address our capital budget, both by one-time appropriations for capital and perhaps for using it for debt service when we issued bonds for larger projects. And finally, tax relief. We knew that we wanted to use some of the money to help mitigate the increase in the annual tax bill. So, we were looking to balance many needs with that money as it came in, and we have been able to do so. This chart will show you how we have actually allocated that money that has come in from University Station. First, operating budgets. We have been able to provide additional funding to the school and municipal operating budgets with the University Station revenue. For the school budget, in FY16, we provided an additional $1 million in funding. In FY17, $883,000, so a total to date, $1.9 million. For the municipal budget, $461,000 in FY16, $272,000 in FY17, for a total of $733,000. So, this money has allowed us to increase the operating budgets to the desired level of services without having to have a general override. The town has not had a general operating override since 2007, which is now a 10-year period. So, this funding here is built into those budgets and ongoing. Next, in the direct service costs. The school department has not had the impact of direct services that was originally outlined in the impact studies for University Station, but we have allocated in FY17 budget, $215,000 to handle some of the costs they have, including the need to have a separate bus run down to the University Station residential property. In the municipal budgets, we have allocated first in FY15, $565,000, and now tonight in the FY18 budget, $570,000 towards our public safety departments, particularly to increase our staffing in our police and fire departments, to make sure that we're handling the University Station project and make sure that we're still giving the same level of service to other areas in town. On the capital budget, we had a one-time appropriation of capital money, $975,000, at our fall town meeting in 2015, and that was appropriated into our capital fund. And then, last year's town meeting for debt service, we were able to allocate $800,000 to pay for the debt service for the new police station. That allowed us to keep that project within Prop Two and a Half and not have to ask for a debt exemption override. And then finally, for tax bill relief, we've been able each year to use a portion of this new revenue to help us control the increase each year in the tax bill. We've done that by having what we call unused tax levy. So, University Station provides us with additional money. We're not spending all of the money that comes in. We're taking their money, allocating it out to the budget, in a sense subsidizing everyone else's tax bill. So, in FY16, we used $500,000 for that purpose. FY17, $670,000. FY18, this year, another $600,000. So, a total of $1.7 million of that funding has been used for that purposes. So, we have been able to reach multiple budget areas. The University Station project has been very important to the town's finances and has been very beneficial to our budget process. Looking further at the efforts with tax relief taken in recent years, there are several tools which we can utilize to help limit the growth in the annual tax bill. We can keep our debt and operating budgets within Proposition Two and a Half. We can maintain that commercial tax shift and continue to tax the commercial at a higher rate, not utilizing all of our available levy, again, not spending to our maximum limits that we're allowed to, and we can also appropriate free cash directly to reduce the tax rate. Our Board of Selectmen and Finance and Warrant Commission have worked hard to incorporate all of these tools into our budget process. In FY17, we did incorporate all of these tools, and we had a very positive result. The bar graph here shows you again a look at our average annual tax bill. Shown in green on the left, in FY16, that bill was about $8,600. Without use of the tools, that bill would have grown, as shown in blue, to over $9,000, a 4.3% increase. With the tools in place, the actual bill, as shown in red, $8,700 or a 1.3% increase. So, did the FY17 tax bill, did your tax bill go down? No, it did not, and really, there is not the expectation that we'll be able to do that going forward. But the 1.3% increase was certainly much lower than what it would have been and was the lowest increase that we have had in our tax bill in a 10-year period. In FY18, the budget you're voting tonight, all of those tools are incorporated again, and when our Selectmen vote the actual tax rate late in the fall, we do expect to see similar results to this for FY18. Looking at the actual articles that you're voting tonight, Articles One and Two are cleanup articles. We're making transfers to help clean up and close out our current FY17 budget year. The major item we're dealing with in those articles is our snow and ice account. Article Three would provide if we had any unpaid bills from prior year. We do not, so when we reach that article, the moderator will instruct you that no action is necessary. Article Four is our main FY18 operating budget, $87 million. This is where we provide our main services to the community and is where we fund our, all of our staffing, our teachers, our police, our fire, and our GPW employees. The bar graph shows the distribution of that 87 million to the various departments. With the schools being shown in blue, $43 million, the municipal budget in red, at $19 million, our fixed cost budget, $13.5 million in yellow, and that's our health insurance, pension, payroll taxes, et cetera, for all of our school and municipal employees, and then in green, our debt service at $6.3 million. And our town and school officials and administration and staff work very hard to provide the community with a high level of quality service with these budget allocations. So, town meeting action tonight in Article Four will look to approve the operating budget for FY18. When we reach that article, the moderator will ask you to turn to page 71 in your town meeting report, and then she will lead you through the budget discussion. Articles Five through Eight all deal with our capital budget. These articles provide funding for our school and municipal building and facilities, public safety and GPW equipment. The bar graph shows the spending each year on our main two articles, school and municipal. We have really worked hard to try to increase the dollars that we are directing towards capital. As shown in green, this year, those two main articles will be $1.7 million, and you can see, if you look back to the left on the slide, just a few years ago in FY14, those two articles were $820,000. So, we have more than doubled what we've been able to allocate towards our capital budget. And again, town meeting action tonight, Articles Five through Eight, you'll be voting for capital for the town, school, and sewer departments. Article Nine is our main stabilization account, our main savings account for the town, very important component of our credit rating. The bar graph shows you the balance each year in that account. We were able, in two years, as shown with the arrows underneath them, FY12 and 13, town meeting was able to appropriate some one-time revenue and build that account up to a healthy balance, and in the years since then, we've simply transferred $100,000 each year from free cash into the fund to help it maintain at our, at our level that we need per our financial policies. So, town meeting action tonight, we will be looking just to do that transfer for Article Nine, $100,000. Article Ten is our capital fund. This is an account to save and pay for large capital projects. The bar graph shows you the balance in each year in the account. We do not yet have an ongoing funding source for this account, but we have tried in recent years to utilize any one-time revenue as a way to build this account. If you look at the bar graph, you can see that for several years, we had essentially no funding in this account. In FY16, town meeting was able to utilize some one-time revenue to build up this account, and that included that $925,000 I previously mentioned from University Station money. Last year's town meeting actually spent some of this account. We used $650,000 to replace the turf field at the high school. In this year, we have a small bit of one-time revenue, $397,000 in bond premium money coming from a bond we issued last summer. We would like to appropriate this back into that account. That would give us a balance in that fund, as shown in green, $1.47 million. It does require town meeting action to use that account, so we would need to come back to you before we could utilize this for anything. So, town meeting action tonight is to put the $397,000 into that account. Article Eleven is the appropriation of free cash to help reduce the tax rate. So, here, we'll use $500,000 of free cash, voting directly to reduce the tax rate for FY18. This continues the action we took last year, and again, is just one of the tools that's being used this year in the budget to help mitigate that increase in the tax bill. So, Article Eleven will be that appropriation. And finally, Article Twelve deals with our OPEB liability. This is the long-term liability to provide funding for healthcare benefits for school and municipal retirees, much like a pension liability. We have made some significant progress both on the revenue and expense side of this liability in recent years. The bar graph shows our annual funding towards that liability. As you can see on the graph, we had two years, as shown with the arrows, FY13, FY16, where we were able to significantly increase our annual funding. That came because in those years, we had significant changes to our healthcare benefits, and the savings we were able to generate from that, what we were already paid in our health insurance budget, we were able to redirect towards the OPEB liability, and that has allowed us to raise this to what we needed to be without taking away from other areas in the budget. In the years since, we're just going to maintain at this current level, so action tonight would be shown in the green bar, $1.39 million, and that will be in Article Twelve, appropriated to the OPEB liability. That completes our review of the financial articles. As always, we greatly appreciate the time, attention, and care that town meeting gives to our financial matters. Thank you.
Okay, let's get started. Article One, to see if the town will vote to appropriate by transfer from available funds the sum of $355,000 to supplement the following fiscal year 2017 appropriations. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion to so vote, is there a second? This vote requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion about Article One? Seeing no discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Appears to be a unanimous vote in favor of Article One. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate by transfer from available funds the sum of $403,800 to supplement the following fiscal year 2017 appropriations. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion to so vote, is there a second? This requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion about Article Two? Seeing no discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Appears to be a unanimous vote in favor of Article Two. Article Three, there is no action to be taken on Article Three, moving to Article Four. This is the budget, and so with respect to Article Four, I will go through Appendix D each page, and if somebody wants something held, they should indicate so. And Paul Fitzgerald and Tony will be looking for folks who are interested in discussing items on pages 71 through 77. And all you need to do is say hold. So, Article Four is to see what sums of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds for the operation of the municipal departments and public school system for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as set forth in Appendix D. Are there any holds on page 71 of Article, hold on one second, sorry. It comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's motion and recommendation that the town so vote. It does require a majority vote. Is there a second? Thank you. Okay. Moving to Articles, to page 71, is there anyone who wants to put a hold on 71? 75? 77? I did not see any holds. Did I miss any holds? And there's no holds in the little theater. Is there any discussion on the main budget? Seeing no discussion, we'll call the vote. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. It is so voted. Moving to Article six, which does require a majority vote, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $867,000 for the purchase lease or lease purchase of the following capital equipment for the fire departments, police departments, DPW, and other municipal officers. This comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Again, this is a majority vote. Is there any discussion about Article five? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. It is a majority vote in favor to approve Article five. Article six, again, requiring a majority vote to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $867,000 for the purchase lease or lease purchase of the following capital equipment involving technology, furniture, HVAC, repairs, maintenance, copiers, and vehicles. This comes before the town on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there any discussion about Article six? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It is a majority vote to approve Article six. Article seven, again, requiring a majority vote. Article seven to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $600,000 for the purchase lease or lease purchase of the following capital equipment, SCADA systems upgrade. Coming before the town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's motion and recommendation that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article seven? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. It is a majority vote to approve Article seven. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $949,000 for the purchase lease or lease purchase of the following capital equipment for projects and improvements for the council on aging, school IT. Coming before the town on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation that the town so, recommendation and motion that the town so vote. This is a majority vote. Is there a second? Is there any discussion about Article eight? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. It is a majority vote to approve Article eight. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $100,000 for the stabilization fund. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? This is a majority vote. Is there any discussion about Article nine? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It is a majority vote in favor to approve Article nine. Article 10, again, requiring a majority vote to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $397,000 to the capital improvements stabilization fund established in accordance with general laws. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's vote, recommendation that the town, in motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Again, requiring a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 10? Yes, sir. Please, you'll need a microphone, and you'll need to state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Peter Ittig. I live at 108 Bay Colony Drive in Westwood. And Article 10 is a slush fund for future unspecified capital expenses. I would like to propose an amendment to this article that will instead devote these funds as in Article 11, as in Article 11, to reducing the tax levy instead of to unspecified future capital expenses.
Sir, is your amendment in writing?
I, as I said, it is to amend the proposal to use the language from Article 11 to replace the phrase capital improvement stabilization fund with the language of Article 11, which would devote the money to reduce the tax levy.
So amendments do need to be in writing and do need to be presented to the moderator. If you would like to put it in writing, you can do so, and we can help you with that now. Is that what you want to do? That will take some time. We do, we do have a rule that amendments do need to be in writing. Okay, we do have an amendment to Article 10 filed with the moderator. The article is out of scope because you can only use the free cash to reduce the tax levy. You cannot use the bond premium account, which is what is at issue in Article 10. So that amendment is not in scope and therefore not accepted, and we still are discussing Article 10. Any further discussion about Article 10? Yes, right here. And please, if you are, if you know that you're going to speak to some, one of the articles, please do come up to the front to use the microphones so that we can keep this moving and potentially finish our work this evening. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mark McMahon, 24 Brookfield Road. I noticed the discussion mentioned some anticipated capital projects. I was just wondering if someone could speak to that, if we're putting aside this money?
Mrs. Hyde?
As way of background, we have a long-range financial planning committee that works on a five-year capital plan. There are probably 30 items on that list, but large ones would be the potential for a school building project, the need to repair our main fire station, town hall, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a very lengthy list, DPW equipment. The police-fire station projects were on that list until they were approved. So there is a long-range financial planning document with a five-year capital plan that's available to the public if you'd like to look at it further.
Any further discussion on Article 10? Again, this is a majority vote, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It is a majority vote in favor. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $500,000 to reduce the tax levy in fiscal year 2018. This requires a majority vote and comes before us on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on Article 11? Seeing no discussion, again, this is a majority vote required. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. A majority vote in favor to approve Article 11. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of 1.39 million to the OPEB liability trust fund. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and vote, and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Again, this is a majority vote. Is there discussion about Article 12? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. It is a majority vote in favor of Article, to approve Article 12. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to accept as town weighs the streets listed below as laid out by the selectmen. Phillips Way, Fox Meadow Drive, Deerfield Avenue Extension. This comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, and does require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 13? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 13. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or borrow and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to reconstruct Wilson Way to which the businesses along said Wilson Way will be responsible for betterment charges equal to half the cost to reconstruct, and to authorize the selectmen to accept a grant of easement and accept said Wilson Way as a public way once reconstructed, and to meet said appropriation, appropriate the sum of $140,000 from free cash. This comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, and does require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 14?
Hi, Claire Galkowski, 320 Dover Road. I thought this, it was interesting that the town wants to subsidize the improvement of a private way in order to make it so that the town has to take care of it. And I just question why, why our tax money is being paid, being used or being asked for to pay for half the cost of a, a private way upgrade.
Does anyone want to explain that? Mrs. Hyde?
This is a road that, differing from some of the other residential streets, which might be part of a development that a developer has set aside funds, bond money that would be used to complete the road, this is a road that's been in existence for a very long time. We do, as a town, have a history of where roads have fallen into disrepair, have been private ways of splitting the cost. So in this case, the abutting commercial property owners are sharing the cost. They initiated it, and we're following through on a past practice. And we think it's the appropriate thing if we are going to be, being asked to take the road on. We want it up to the standards that the town has set, and it is our practice to do it this way.
Any other discussion on Article 14? Again, this does require a two-thirds vote. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Does appear to be a two-thirds vote in favor of Article 14. It is a two-thirds vote in favor of Article, to approve Article 14. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for and accept state funds to be received as prepayment and/or reimbursement for road improvements, and deposit said funds into the town's road improvement account to be used to pay expenditures made or to continue the town's road improvement program of cracked ceilings, secondary resurfacing, and major reconstruction, and enter into contracts for expenditure of such funds. The Article 15 comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, and does require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 15? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote in favor of Article 15. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire or take by eminent domain four parcels of land abutting the north side of Clabboard Tree Sea. Tree Street, north of its intersection with Washington Street, as shown on a plan. It does include four different parcels that are laid out in the warrant article. This does require a two-thirds vote and comes before us on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 16? Someone in front? Yes, Mr. Pervetera. No, we need to, this is being recorded. No, that's fine. Again, we're on Article 16. You do need to stand and just state your name.
Chris Pervetera, 16 Dean Street. I assume this is the case, but it is not written in the article. But will the owners of this property be compensated for the takings? Usually, as far as I know, that's the case. Is the town paying for the takings?
Selectman Walsh.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do an estimate, and based on our estimate, we do compensate those that we take the land from. As you can see from the article, three of those properties are with Severian, so they are working with us because that is the intersection that's most affected.
Other discussion about Article 16? We need you to have a microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Peter Iddick, Winaway Big Colony Drive. Is there any estimate of what this will ultimately cost?
Mr. Walsh?
So we have four estimates, because there are four parcels of land. We have smallest one being $4,500, the second one $17,500, third one $17,000, and the largest, and the last one, $10,500. I didn't bring my calculator. I left my phone over there, but I could add them up if necessary.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Approximately $50,000.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, and again, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. There is a two-thirds vote in favor of approving Article 16. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of reconstructing Clapboard Tree and Washington Street intersection, including payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, including takings, and to meet said appropriation, appropriate the sum of $400,000 from free cash. This comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, and does require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 17? Question in the back? We're going to have to move the microphones a little quicker now as we're starting to pick up questions.
Joe Pervetera, 16 Dean Street. I have one quick question. If the town of Westwood is appropriating $400,000 for the intersection change, and part of that is a result of the hundreds of apartments that have been put onto the Polaroid property, how much money is being put forward by the town of Norwood? Why are we funding this if they're receiving the tax money?
Mrs. Hyde?
The town, the town of Norwood is not contributing funds. The apart, the apartments you refer to, I think you might mean the memory care facility on Clapboard Tree Street, which is not apartments, just for clarification. Through that, we receive $300,000 of mitigation funds, the, excuse me, excuse me, $450,000. So the project cost in total is, the eight fifty? Around $850,000. So they are contributing to the expense of the intersection improvements.
Excuse me, you need to be recognized, and you need a microphone.
Yes, I did start by saying the town of Norwood is none.
And so do you, Mrs. Hyde. Okay. Any further discussion on Article 17? Seeing none, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote in favor to approve Article 17. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or borrow and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay for the design of sidewalk improvements along Clapboard Tree, Winter Street, Stanford Drive, and improvements to the intersection of North Street and Route 109, other locations to be submitted to the Complete Streets Program for Approval and Notice to Proceed. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote and requiring a two-thirds vote, is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 18? Seeing no discussion, and this again does require a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 18. I do notice the people are in the back. If you are a registered voter, please do make sure that you have a seat. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Westwood by inserting a new chapter 284 marijuana. This does require a two-thirds vote. Comes before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion about Article 19? Yes, Ms. Hirschberg.
Good evening. Marsha Hirschberg, 40 Putting Drive. I have a series of questions on this article. If someone is adjudicated and found guilty, would that individual then have a criminal record? Number two, we have a similar but not matching bylaw on alcohol consumption, and I want to know why there is such a difference. Number three, if we are concerned about health in the, the town of Westwood and our residents, why do we not have a bylaw prohibiting the smoking and the secondary smoke that has been deemed, and we all know, is hazardous? And four, why, because our state and other states, it's a trend nationally, to eliminate, try to keep, especially our young people, from having criminal records? Why are we moving in the opposite direction?
Police Chief Silva?
And just for clarification, I think a couple of your questions were beyond the scope of this article. This is a civil bylaw. It is not a criminal bylaw. Chief Silva?
Good evening. I'm sorry, I didn't write down the multi-parts of the question, and I know the moderator has ruled that some are beyond the scope. As it relates to the public inhalation of marijuana, the bylaws seeks to restrict that because while some people may opt to smoke marijuana on their own privately-owned property, it seeks to protect people who do not so choose to inhale marijuana, to include children. And marijuana is, while voted decriminalized and legal, in some cases in Massachusetts, is still a federally prohibited substance, and many people throughout the country have opted not to partake in such usage of marijuana, smoking.
Other questions? Other discussion? Yes, over here. They're bringing you a microphone.
Kamala Hertz, 10 Rock Meadow Road. I still don't understand the difference between what's on the books for alcohol as proposed to what will be on the books for marijuana. Is there not a difference as was first pointed out?
Do you want to address that? You can answer the difference between the two, if you know.
So marijuana and alcohol are just treated disparately in the general laws. One, one is criminal, one is civil, one, both have different requirements in how you do it. Neither is alcohol prohibited federally as a, as a substance, whereas marijuana is. So this is a civil bylaw infraction, consonant with the will of the voters in the town, as it related recently to the ballot question.
Thank you. Other discussion? Other questions about Article 19?
Can you hear me? Claire Galkowski, 320 Dover Road. I don't think the issue of the criminalization of it has been adequately addressed. If, if a young person or any person is arrested for this, presumably it would be at the discretion of the police department whether to charge them criminally, and this would follow them for their whole lives if they're, if they're convicted. So I don't believe Chief Scobal acknowledged that there is a criminal element here. Is that, did I miss something?
It's Chief Silva.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief Silva.
That's okay. That's all right. And this is a civil bylaw. It is not changing the criminal code, which of course we couldn't do here at town meeting. So this does create a civil process for regulating consumption of marijuana. Other questions? Ms. Hirschberg, this is your second time. A number of your questions before were out of scope. Please, go ahead.
I do know the answers to the questions. There's a difference in the fines that are imposed to the woman who asked this, that question. There are financial fines for the marijuana discussion, but none for the alcohol. But I wanted to ask, since we do have this bylaw regarding liquor being consumed, I was curious as to how many people have been adjudicated on that charge approximately in the last year? I'm not, not a definitive number, but what are we looking at?
Does anyone have the answer to that question? I don't have the answer to that question. Chief Silva?
So we haven't charged anyone with a bylaw violation of alcohol consumption of any kind. Occasionally, alcohol violations, particularly as they relate to juveniles, are something that we handle in the family room rather than the courtroom. We handle that through non-criminal disposition hearings at the magistrate's office. So we've never charged anybody with any type of a bylaw offense in the past four years that I'm aware of as it relates to alcohol since I've been a chief.
Thank you. Any new questions? Seeing none. Again, this is a two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. I believe it's a two-thirds vote to approve Article 19. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 19. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood Related to marijuana establishments, including amendments to Section 2.0, 4.12, and any necessary amendments thereto. There is a planning board report on Article 20, but I will finish and make sure that we have, the FinCom has recommended and moved that the town so vote. Is there a second? Again, this is a quanuma vote of two-thirds, and we will hear the planning board report.
Chris Pfaff, 534 Everett Street, Chairman of the Planning Board. In compliance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the planning board held a public hearing on the 13 zoning amendment articles numbered 20 through 32 on February 28th, 2017, and continued the hearings until March 6th, March 7th, March 27th, April 11th, April 24th, and May 1st. On April 11th, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend the town meeting vote to approve Article 20 as presented in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion about Article 20? Yes, way in the back.
My question, Bob Tucker, 636 High Street. Question is point of order regarding a two-thirds majority vote. Am I correct in saying that if seven individuals believe that there, that there were not two-thirds, and they stand to contest it, that the chair must recognize that?
You are correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So Article 20, any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 20. Article 21 requires a majority vote, is a petitioner article, to see if the town will impose a moratorium against demolishing dwellings for a period of three years. I won't read the whole petition. This comes on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town vote indefinite postponement. Is there a second? To be clear, the motion... To be clear, the motion of the Finance Commission is for indefinite postponement and cannot be amended. The vote is a majority vote, but the indefinite postponement is what is before the town meeting right now. Is there any discussion about Article 21? Am I missing someone? The woman standing in blue, I think?
Shirley Hinley Longval, 24 Willow Street. I just wanted to say that I'm glad the petitioner put this forward even though there's a recommendation for indefinite postponement. I am very concerned in the number of knockdowns, tear downs, building larger homes, and keeping entry-level people for coming into this town. I'm really very concerned. I mean, I've heard people say, "My children can never afford to come and live in Westwood." And I think we really have to address this as a town. We really, I would hope that we'd want to have a number of different housing stock and price points, because I think that's important to this town. So I'm glad that this came forward, and I think it's a, something that we really do have to look at as a community.
Yes, yes.
I'm the petitioner, and I'd like to speak to this article. Also...
Just state your name and address.
My name is Jerry Wolf, and I reside at 46...
And use the microphone.
I reside at 46 Buckmaster Road. Okay. Do I understand that I... Okay, do I understand that I can't amend this article?
This is, what's before the town now is a motion for indefinite postponement. That motion cannot be amended.
Okay, so I can't amend the article?
You cannot amend the motion for indefinite postponement. If the motion for indefinite postponement fails and the underlying article comes up, at that point, an amendment might be in order.
Okay, I'm not understanding you. I'm attempting to amend the article that I submitted.
You cannot amend the article at this time because what is before the town meeting is the FinCom's motion for indefinite postponement. Effectively, that is a no vote. If you were against indefinite postponement and you wanted to take up the article, you would then vote against the motion for indefinite postponement. A yes vote on indefinite postponement means we do not take up the article this evening. Is that clear? Is that clear to everybody? So... Okay. So what is before the town right now is the motion for indefinite postponement. If you vote yes, it means that you want to not take the article up this evening and it will be indefinitely postponed. If you vote no, it means that you do want to get to the underlying article. The motion for indefinite postponement cannot be amended. Yes, can you get a microphone?
Chris Pravatera, 16 Dean Street. I urge everybody here at town meeting to vote no against indefinite postponement so there can be further discussion.
Okay, again, what is before the town is the motion for indefinite postponement. I see someone in back. So at this time, we are not discussing the underlying article.
Hi, Jennifer Farah, 932 Clapport Tree Street. I think that what is proposed is the three years. You can't really get accomplished what you want done. Also, it prevents people who want to build a property personally, not just contractors, from being able to demolish a house and build it even though they're a longtime resident of Westwood. So I just don't think it's going to be effective the way it's been written.
Anyone else who wants to speak on the motion for indefinite postponement? Yes, here in the back. We need to move those microphones, guys.
Jack Campion, 6 Brookfield Road. The notes to the article mention internal inconsistencies. Could someone please explain those?
If we get to the underlying article, those inconsistencies can be explained. At this point, there is a motion for indefinite postponement. Again, if you vote yes, it means that you agree with the FinCom's recommendation to indefinitely postpone this article. If you vote no, it means that you want to take up the underlying article. Any further discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement? Yes. Here in front, in the middle. And again, it's gonna, this is gonna move much faster. If you do want to speak, if you come to the front of the room and use the microphone. Otherwise, it's nine o'clock.
Hi, Darren Wicks, 110 Rock Meadow Road. I agree with the need for more affordable housing in town, but I just think the approach is incorrect. It actually hurts those of us that actually have homes that are actually more in need of tearing down than not and actually drives our property values down.
Okay. Again, what is before town meeting is the motion, the FinCom's motion for indefinite postponement. Is there any further discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement? Yes, Mr. Wolf? You need a microphone?
I have one. I would urge this town meeting to vote no on indefinite postponement because I believe I have some very interesting information that the town should hear.
Okay. I'm gonna call the vote. Let's, what is before the town meeting is the FinCom's motion for indefinite postponement. There is a majority vote required. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please say aye. All those opposed to indefinite postponement, please say no. Okay, we'll need a, this is a majority vote and we will need a standing vote so we will get to stretch. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please stand. Are the counters ready? Okay, all counters up to the front of the room, please.
This is the moderator. We've got the runners. We talked to them, we said to them, "Keep encouraging people." Because they're kids, they're not...
I know, I know.
I just had a couple...
Well, then you can don't...
Or guys, guys, runners, just run. But also, I also really told her, unless she recognizes something new, they cannot be... So they said, "Well, we're..." I'm leading a live... It's such a... I brought the console in.
Oh, not yet. Oh, do you have, are you, are you a counter? As soon as the counters have their counts, would you please report to the front of the, to the clerk's desk? So all counters should, who have, who have their counts, need to get them into the front of the room. Stay, stay standing for, for the moment, if you would, please. Okay, we're just waiting for one counter to return and report in. Okay, everyone can sit. Are we ready for the nos to stand? So if you are opposed to indefinite postponement, please stand. All those opposed to indefinite postponement, please stand. Everyone else should be seated so that we can count the vote. At this point, we are now counting those who are standing and who are opposed to indefinite postponement. Thank you. Okay. Yes. At this point, the microphones are in the back, and the, and there are microphones in the front. So those of you who are in front and want to speak, please do go to one of the microphones. Yes, your name and address.
Thanks. Ellen Rawlings, 86 Green Hill Road. I just wanted to say, these, this article was proposed because we've heard from many residents that they're not happy with the current zoning, and some people have said that even though they voted in favor of these changes, they're not happy with what those changes actually mean in practice, now that they're seeing it, and it's not just in theory. So I would ask that, that you vote no on indefinite postponement, and let the townspeople take the articles up.
Other discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement.
My name is Marla Schwartz.
I'm sorry?
Hello?
Who's speaking?
Me.
You need to be recognized, ma'am. Go ahead. Your name and address, please.
My name is Marla Schwartz. I live at 32 Westwood Glen Road, and the way some people talk about multi-use and apartments, you would think that they were speaking about nuclear waste facilities.
Okay, I, again, I'm going to remind, remind folks.
I, I urge everyone to vote no on this, so we can talk about it for once. Let's, let's get this, this apartment thing out of the way.
Okay. I will remind people that this will be a civil discussion, that you do need to be recognized by the moderator, and those folks who do have the microphones, I know it's challenging both to be quick and to wait for me to, to acknowledge the person, but that is an important part of maintaining a, a quick and orderly town meeting. There's a point of order for Article 22 on a motion for indefinite postponement. I believe the planning board recommendation comes after the motion for indefinite postponement has been acted on. I'll look to town meeting, to town council to confirm that. The planning board recommendation comes if the article comes up for consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if the motion for indefinite postponement fails, the planning board report would then be in order. Okay. Other discussion about the motion for indefinite postponement. Yes, and you will need to go to a microphone.
Hi, my name is Debbie Conant, and I reside at 21 Strasser Avenue. I personally don't believe that any article should be indefinitely postponed, that there should be a debate amongst the residents as to the pros and cons. Without these debates, we don't know which way to vote, and I think it's important to hear both sides of the arguments. And in the past 10 years of research that I've done on the FINCOM recommendations, no petition article has ever been, they've all been recommended for indefinite postponement. So I urge you to vote against indefinite postponement, and give the residents the chance to speak.
Other discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement for Article 22.
Dmitry Kukunov, 33 Birch Street.
Wait, 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 wait. I've got people up back here, and I've got people in front here. Before you speak, who is in back that wants to speak? Yes, sir. And this will be orderly.
Stephen Barrett, 230 School Street. I would echo, this needs to be discussed. This goes to the heart and soul of the future, of the character of this town, and if we don't talk about it, we're not a town meeting.
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. Dmitry Kukunov, 33 Birch Street. I came to this country 23 years ago. Since year 2000, I am a happy resident of Westwood. Before Westwood became possible, available for my family, I used to live in Brighton, in Quincy, and then finally in Westwood. One of the greatest benefits, I found, that it's really a free country, and everybody can live where he likes and what he can afford today. I have a strong opinion that those people who prefer to live, like in Brighton, Quincy, or Dorchester, are free to go there, but don't try to change our beloved Westwood into one of those towns.
So at this time, yes, sir. And again, people who know they do want to speak, please do come up to the microphone, so we can keep the town meeting moving. Your name and address, please.
Scott McFadden, 8 Strasser Avenue. I live in the Islington area, moved in 2010. I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old, and I will be using the, the Little League school, Little League playground and the school area. I agree with the group that wants to discuss this, because I'll be spending the next decade in this area, and I do not want to be afraid to cross the street. I want to place the park, and I want the ability to enjoy the area. With regard to the current congestion today at 5:30, it took 15 minutes to go from Smith Drive to the Little League Field. So that's only going to get worse, and in the plans today, it hasn't been communicated. So many, many concerns with regard to congestion, ability to walk in the area safely, and enjoy it as a community is a major concern. And lastly, there's a issue with regard to, I'm a big supporter of University Station, big supporter of development, and how it was done. There's major, major feedback to the planning board, that this was not done properly, nor communicated after seeing some of the initial development. Many more people have now realized what's being developed, and have major concerns. I have not typically participated in community discussions like this, because honestly, you know, work and young kids, it's very hard to keep up to date, and many of my peers had no idea that this kind of development was going on. I applaud the volunteers of the planning board, who have worked extremely hard in the last year to get to this point, but clearly, there's many new concerns based on the initial development, where we have to take pause and bring up this as a community to, where it's going to affect us for the next decade to two decades. Thank you.
This is coming before the town meeting on the motion for indefinite postponement. Others who wish to speak on the motion for indefinite postponement. Okay, seeing no discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Indefinite postponement is a majority vote, and it is the ruling of the moderator that the, there is not a majority in favor of indefinite postponement, and therefore, we will move to the underlying, we will move, I'm sorry, do you, let me make sure that everyone understands what I just said. The motion for indefinite postponement failed. The motion for indefinite postponement failed. Is that very clear to everyone? Okay. We will proceed with the underlying article, and we will need a planning board report. Who from the, Chairman Pfaff from the planning board will make the planning board recommendation?
Chris Pfaff. On April 11th, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend the town meeting vote in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 22 as presented in the warrant.
At this point, if the petitioners want to make their presentation on Article 22, that would be in order. There is one petitioner, Debbie Conant, for Article 22. I'm sorry? I thought one was taking Article 22, and one was taking Article 23. Okay. So Ms. Rawlings, you are presenting on Article 22.
22, yes. Do I need to identify myself again, or are we, for the record? Okay. My name's Ellen Rawlings. I live at 86 Green Hill Road. Do I, uh?
You have the power.
Thanks. We wanted to address some of the concerns that were stated about if we were to change the zoning to not include the option to build multifamily residential housing over commercial in the two FMUOD zones that are included in this article, which is 6 and 7. 6 is Islington Center, 7 is the High Street Business District. There have been some concerns and questions and, and statements over a need for diversified housing in Westwood. We actually agree with that, and we feel that there, there is a fair amount of diversified housing in Westwood already, as far as rentals or condos goes. At University Station, there are 350 existing units at the Gables. We understand 100 new units have just been approved to be built, and there's the Bridges Senior Living Facility. Glacier Drive and Everett Street, that FMUOD Zone 3, is also zoned for multifamily housing, and there are several parcels of land there that have not yet been developed. Islington Center, if the proposal to redevelop the four parcels in, near the church, the community center goes through, we could get 40 new one-bedroom apartments. There's also in existence 403 Washington Street, which has some apartments, and there's the Benchmark Facility on Clap Tree Street, which is a memory care facility. And then along High Street and 109, not just in the center, we have the Coburn School, Westwood Glen, Highland Glen, and Fox Hill Village. We don't disagree that multifamily housing should be a part of the equation of diversified housing in our town. We've just heard from many residents that they don't feel that our already congested town centers are the best places to have that. FMUOD 1 and FMUOD 3 would still allow for mixed-use development with multifamily housing. We've also heard that many people feel that they would like to see more affordable paths to ownership, things like what was being addressed in the previous petition article. We don't know what the answer to that problem is, but I think we also agree that part of the issue with the diversified housing base is that starter homes are disappearing. I don't know that rentals is the way to address that problem. We've also, sorry, do I have the, thank you. We've also heard concerns over the, the residential tax burden. In the planning board's presentation to the Islington Center Task Force on this article, there was a, a comment that Washington Street and High Street revitalization is needed to stabilize our commercial tax base and keep the residential property taxes from rising disproportionately. We also heard at a recent planning board meeting that University is, is not performing as well on the commercial side as was expected, and they have revamped the master plan for Phase 2, deleting 50,000 square feet of commercial space. From what we understand, the Brigham and Women's Project will not be providing tax revenue, just the, the one-time payment of $300,000. Commercial tenants, some have left University Station already, others, the people are just not showing up to rent there, yet the apartments that were built will remain. We wonder what's the tipping point? At what point will the number of, of extra rentals and their need for municipal services cost more than what is offset by the commercial tax revenue coming in from places like University, never mind adding additional rentals in the town centers? We're not anti-development. We do want to see our town centers rejuvenated. We just don't want to sacrifice the small-town feel of our town centers in the process of that rejuvenation by seeing very large, three-story, three-block-long buildings being developed in those two specific areas. And lastly, we wanted to note that one of the big motivating factors for presenting this article was feedback from residents. The master plan and the Islington Center plans, both, both of those task forces or committees conducted surveys. There was a survey done in 2012, and 53.5% of the people who responded said they didn't want to see additional rental units built in the town. 54.4% responded that preserving the small-town character of Westwood as a whole was a very high priority. The Islington Center Task Force conducted a survey in 2016. 47.7% responded that they would consider living in single-family housing in the center. There was a question about what kind of housing would you be interested in. There weren't many responses that wanted to see multifamily apartment, condo, rental-type units in the center. 58.4% responded that character is, is Islington's greatest attribute. That survey also allowed for handwritten responses, you know, free-form responses. There were over 200 comments about existing traffic problems, over 140 comments about preserving the character of the town, and over 160 comments specifically saying they did not want to see additional multifamily residential units in Islington Center. That was mostly what I had to share about why this article was presented, and why we ask that people vote to no longer allow continued construction of mixed-use buildings in Islington Center and in High Street Center. Once the character of those areas changes and looks more like a city, we can't change it back. I grew up in this town. Part of the reason I moved back to this town was because I wanted that small-town feel. I, I personally don't want to see that go away. I've heard from a lot of residents that they don't want to see that go away, and that is why I'm standing here presenting to all of you.
Thank you. At this time, the planning board will make its report and recommend, and, and presentation. Who from the? Okay. So just to correct a procedural irregularity, once the motion for indefinite postponement failed, we do need to have a motion to take up Article 22. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to take up Article 22.
And is there a second to that motion? Okay. This will require a two-thirds vote. At this time, the planning board may make its recommend, its recommend, report and presentation. Ms. Lofnane.
Good evening. Nora Lofnane, 74 Sterling Road, and I'm also the Director of Community and Economic Development for the town. Tonight, I'd like to speak to you about the community planning process, Westwood zoning bylaws, and specifically the Flexible Multiple Use bylaw. We have a lot to get through, so I'll go as quickly as I can. First, I'll begin with a quick refresher on Westwood zoning bylaw and zoning map. These items were adopted in the mid-1940s to guide growth in an organized and predictable manner. The planning board is responsible for review and recommendations to the bylaw, and town meeting amendments are permitted by two-thirds majority. As many of you know, the town is broken down into several residential and commercial districts. Those are shown on the map on the left. Each district has prescribed restrictions on permitted uses, minimum lot sizes, setback requirements, building heights. Some areas are also regulated by overlay districts, shown on the right-hand map, and together they form the zoning map, which has underlying and overlying zoning districts. Tonight, there are two petition articles that are before you to propose amendments to the Flexible Multiple Use Overlay District.
That is correct. Only 22 is before town meeting.
I understand. My comments go to both of those articles. Proposed amendments-
You'll have to restrict your comments to Article 22.
Yes, I will restrict my comments to Article 22. The same comments are relating to the FMUOD, Flexible Multiple Use Overlay District, so speaking to the zoning- speaking to the zoning addresses the entire section of that bylaw.
Okay. But to the extent there is a difference between your comments on Article 22 and 23, please do distinguish them.
I will do that.
Thank you.
So the proposed amendments to the bylaw, Flexible Multiple Use Overlay District, which we often refer to as the FMUOD. Just a brief history of this bylaw, what you need to know, it was designed to promote responsible economic development. Westwood is primarily built out. We don't have large swaths of undeveloped land. To create commercial value, we look to the small sections of town that are currently zoned for business. We try to encourage creative redevelopment of commercial properties. The FMUOD bylaw is the best way to do this. We encourage redevelopment through this bylaw that respects the unique character of the town that drew many of us here or keeps us living here. We support the sense of community that we hold dear. This bylaw allows for continued funding of all of the aspects of Westwood that we greatly appreciate: reliable and well-trained police officers and firefighters, well-maintained roadways, fields, trails, public properties, excellent libraries, recreation cultural programs, and a stellar school system. Organized, measured, commercial development is essential to maintain these qualities of Westwood and to continue its desirability. The FMUOD bylaw, as it's currently written, encourages creative redevelopment proposals, requires the Planning Board to make positive findings of compliance with stringent performance and design standards. These are designed to prevent negative impacts on surrounding properties. This bylaw gives the Planning Board a great level of control. It requires discretionary special permit approval rather than by right approval, which would be required under a site plan review. I'd like to walk you through a quick timeline of the planning that the town has gone through over the last 25 years. As you can see here, there has been significant thoughtful and deliberately...deliberate community planning process. I'd like to walk you through this timeline, above the line are zoning bylaw amendments, and below are accomplishments often related to those amendments. Westwood began a focused effort to improve our town centers many years ago. As you can see, in the mid-1990s, the town worked with Mastah to reconstruct Washington Street. Town meeting soon after purchased a former gas station on Washington Street to provide new municipal parking spaces to replace on-street parking spaces that were lost during reconstruction. Continued this by commissioning a town center study to identify opportunities and challenges on both Washington Street and High Street. Next came the reconstruction of High Street, similar to Washington Street. Around the same time, the Planning Board began its comprehensive planning process. Numerous town residents spent two years serving on the steering committee, tasked with determining the character of the town and identifying challenges posed by anticipated growth and ways and strategies to effectively guide that growth. The comprehensive plan was then endorsed by Town Meeting in the year 2000. In 2004, the Islington Community Center, the Islington Community Church, found itself in a difficult position where its membership could no longer support the cost of a large church building. The building was offered to the town. In a hotly debated article before Town Meeting, a decision was made to take control of this property and to preserve the destiny of our town center by controlling this prominent property until we had aspects of zoning in place to adequately handle additional commercial development. Town Meeting authorized this purchase in 2004. Officials remained committed to town center redevelopment, but another project was looming on the horizon around this time. Focus shifted to University Station. Cabot, Cabot &amp; Forbes had just acquired a large piece of land. Over 4 million square feet of development was planned in the Planning Board, and all town officials got right to work on reviewing that. Town Meeting was asked to adopt the mixed-use overlay districts. They did so, and all town officials spent the next several years planning very carefully for a large mixed-use project at University Avenue. From 2005 through 2008, this was the primary interest of the town, and a lot of time and energy went into it, this ambitious project. Due to a number of factors, including the economic downturn, in 2008 and 2009, the project came to a screeching halt. At that time, officials sat in and reviewed the arduous process of review that went into this project. In doing that, they determined that they...what we needed was a more predictable zoning bylaw to assist in mixed-use development. To that end, the Planning Board proposed, and Town Meeting approved, the FMUOD bylaw. This bylaw provides flexible zoning to allow mixed-use development in several sections of the town. Town Meeting adopted the Flexible Multiple Use Overlay District in 2011. The first project under this bylaw soon came to be, 40 Allied Drive. For those of you who don't recognize that, that's the Shields MRI, New England Baptist Building. The property straddles Westwood and Dedham Town Lines, and the FMUOD bylaw allowed for a cooperative by-town review process involving multiple boards from both towns to approve this project. At the same time in 2011, the Planning Board requested, and Town Meeting approved, the upper-story residential overlay district. This was an intentionally limited test-case overlay district. It was intended to permit mixed-use redevelopment of the Colburn School on High Street. This bylaw allowed for relocation and reuse of this historic building and permitted construction of the new Westwood Public Library. It resulted in new commercial value and expanded housing opportunity. A total of six two-bedroom apartments were created above a bank, and this was considered a resounding success by all. Follow ahead to 2012, the Planning Board next turned its attention to a new mixed-use project, University Station. The Planning Board began two years of intensive cooperative planning, working with the development team and peer review consultants to prepare the University Avenue Mixed Use Overlay bylaw, another overlay district, to help shape the developers' plans in a manner that would best serve the town. In May of 2013, more than 1,300 residents came to Town Meeting to overwhelmingly approve the university development project. Construction began immediately, and the first phase opened in 2015. And as you heard from Pam Dukeman tonight, the results of that project have really set Westwood on a great course. So at that point in 2014, the Planning Board could once again turn its attention to our town centers. The Board looked to the success of the flexible and upper-story zoning residential bylaws. They began a process by proposing new overlay districts for Washington and High Street. A number of commercial property owners were at that time in the midst of transactions. Staff met with the property owners, discussed the potential benefits of FMUOD. The Planning Board decided it would be best to implement this bylaw over two years to avoid any interference in ongoing real estate transactions and to allow for deliberate, conscientious, fully transparent approach to zoning. Town Meeting added FMUOD 6, Guiding Development on Washington Street, and FMUOD 7, Guiding Development on High Street, to allow commercial uses in 2014. In 2015, as they said they would, the Planning Board proposed, and Town Meeting adopted, revisions to allow for up to 50% of a project in either of these districts, Washington Street or High Street, to include residential development. These maps show you the two districts that are being discussed here. FMUOD 6 is on the left, that's the Washington Street Overlay District. FMUOD 7 is on the right, that's the High Street District. You can see that the Washington Street District essentially runs south of...runs along Washington Street, south of Fairview Street, down to Clappertree Street. The High Street District runs along High Street, between Gay Street and Hartford Street, and projects on either side of those roads. In 2012...I'm sorry. In 2014, the next project that we worked on was the Fire Station 2 project in Islington Center. The...this was the first town center project that was within an FMUOD Special Permit District. The new Fire Station 2 in Islington Center was designed in consultation with the Public Safety Task Force, who spent more than two years looking at plans, choosing the location and the design of that facility. The fire station was approved by the Planning Board in the form of an FMUOD Special Permit, and was then funded with overwhelming approval by Town Meeting. Soon after, another project came forth. This is the project at 301 323 Washington Street. This project was proposed by Purtus Yellow Properties as a mixed-use development. The building at 301 315 Washington Street, which is the far-left building on the right-hand slide, and on the left-hand side as well, was proposed for renovation. The construction of a new mixed-use building at 317 and 323 Washington Street was also proposed. As you can see in this slide, the developer initially presented the rendering on your left, that's the applicant's original submission. The new building, in either case, would replace two former mixed-use buildings, the Blue Heart Tavern and the Gillis Law Office, both of which previously contained apartments above office space. The Planning Board reviewed the building, and as you can see, made substantial changes before granting approval. The Planning Board review process began with a pre-application meeting. The developer proposed his initial design, a masonry building with 16 apartments. The Planning Board engaged peer review consultants, and staff worked extensively with the developer and his architect to change the plan to better fit the area. The project was reviewed over the course of several months at open public meetings. The Planning Board recommended and accommodated area residents by meeting in the ICC, the Islington Community Center, and at various locations convenient to the neighborhood. A focus was placed on village architecture. The Clappertree Building with predominant gables emerged. The project architect drew elements from surrounding buildings, the optometrist, the Needham Bank Building, the Islington Community Center, and houses further north on Washington Street. What you can see in this slide here is the pre-project view. The slide on the top left shows the Gillis Law Office and the Blue Heart Tavern to its right. The slide on the right shows the rear of those buildings, and the below slide shows the building, the Islington Post Office Building, that was renovated. This view shows the projects in progress and upon construction, the same views that were showed in the previous slide. So this is the before picture, and this is the after. The project provides significant upgrades to Islington Center. It has drawn compliments from the vast majority of residents, and it has drawn detractors as well. There are some people who appreciate it, and there are others who do not. In any event, there will be...
There will not be comments.
...this project...we believe that project will be a much-needed catalyst for further redevelopment. I'm sorry. The next point I want to bring up is that the Selectmen appointed the Islington Center Task Force specifically to discuss and to review all aspects of development in Islington Center. This task force contains members from the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Finance and Warrant Commission, the Library Board of Trustees, the Westwood Historical Commission, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission, as well as three neighborhood representatives, two business representatives, and 10 staff members of the town. All cooperated for a long process to review development in Islington Center. The task force was charged with reviewing all aspects of Islington Center. They were charged with identifying challenges and opportunities, reviewing all development proposals, and advising town boards prior to their taking any action. This began a study of existing conditions. They issued a survey that was discussed a little bit before I spoke. They issued a request for proposals for the redevelopment of four town-owned properties. And they spent nine months reviewing seven separate proposals and selected the best option for recommendation to the Planning Board. A quick view of what that RFP project is, that would be reviewed under the FMUOD District bylaw if not amended. Here's an example of one of the buildings that is proposed in Option 6 of the task force preferred option. This calls for a new mixed-use building at the northeast corner of Washington and E Street. The building would be a replica of the ICC with commercial uses on the first floor and residential above, and may contain as many as 28 one-bedroom apartments or condominiums if such is approved by the Selectmen, then by the Planning Board, and eventually by Town Meeting. This project also calls for relocation of the historic Wentworth Hall, or Islington Branch Library, and the Blue Heart Tavern to locations on the west side of Washington Street. Both buildings would be preserved and restored for continued use. This project also calls for the renovation of the CVS and Crown Cleaners Building to house a new community center and space for the MMO Nursery School. As you can see, this building is also designed with village architecture in mind. The project finally calls for a new CVS store to be located on the northwest corner of Washington and school streets. Option 6 will now be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen. If the Selectmen find the plans worthy of pursuit, they will submit it for Planning Board review. If the Planning Board grants approval, it will then come back to Town Meeting. Town Meeting must approve by a two-thirds vote to allow any property transfer. This is an opportunity for a beneficial public and private partnership. All steps along the review will contain continued opportunities for public engagement, and no action will occur without support of Town Meeting voters. In the midst of this long-term community planning process, a group of residents submitted two petition articles. We're here tonight to review those articles, including 22, which is before us at the moment. The petitioners expressed opposition both to the 301 323 Washington Street project and to the Islington Center RFP proposal. Article 22 was intended to amend the FMUOD bylaw to prevent these type of mixed-use developments in our town centers, both Washington Street and High Street. Article 22 would prohibit multifamily uses in both town centers. It would allow Planning Board to consider only commercial uses. The existing article allows Planning Board to consider residential uses for up to 50% of a development's total floor area. The petition article would eliminate all residential uses for both Washington Street and High Street districts. It would remove the incentive for redevelopment of aging properties and would limit opportunities to attract desirable businesses. I will glance over this slide and move directly to Articles 22. I will only speak to that one. The Westwood Planning Board, the Islington Task Force, and the Finance and Warrant Commission all recommended indefinite postponement of this article. You may have heard speak of a zoning freeze that may be in the works. The...an application was filed with the Planning Board for preliminary subdivision approval to maintain the existing zoning on the properties on your right that are shown in blue. The properties on your left are the entire FMUOD 6 Washington Street zone. The zone freeze, if approved, and that is no sure thing at this moment, we won't know for seven or eight months if it is approved, would only apply to the blue parcels. There are several properties in the Washington Street area which would benefit from the FMUOD District as it's currently devised. These are a few of them shown here. The Blue Heart Tavern is still undeveloped, and there is no final site for it unless the proposal that's going before the Selectmen is approved. The FMUOD zone is the best hope for this building. Other properties are shown as vacant properties at the south end of Washington Street. They would all benefit from this bylaw as it currently exists. Similarly, on High Street, there are several properties that could use some improvement. They too would benefit from the FMUOD District as it's been designed.
Thank you. Thank you. We are currently considering Article 22, which does require a two-thirds vote. Is there further discussion? Yes, in the back. Yes.
Can everybody hear me? I live at 32 Westwood Glen Road. Both Westwood Glen and Highland Glen have recently been sold, and their rents are going up as high as $25,000 and $3,000 a month. This is unaffordable for most people. I've been living in Westwood for 12 or 15 years, and every time I come here, I hear people speak about rental people as if, as I said before, as if we were urban landfill or possibly nuclear waste disposal sites. You know, there are people in town who don't want to live in a 20-room building. There are 20-room buildings going up on High Street, going on Clappertree Street, going up on Gay Street. These apparently do not detract from the small-town look, and I'd like to know why, because some of them are really ugly. But having eight or 10 apartments down there in Islington, yeah, that's going to detract from the small-town look. That's going to take away from it. Having people like me, who are in their 70s, have someplace to live, that's going to detract from the old-town look. And by the way, I'd like to know about that guy who's talking about safe crossing. Is he the one who nearly hit me at the corner of High Street and Gay Street when he went through the light the other day?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna...we're gonna move on to other discussion, and we're gonna stay within the scope of the article with respect to our comments. the article with respect to our comments. Yes, over here.
Hi, good evening. Kathryn Rowley, Eight Strasser Ave. I think there are many of us tonight that sit in the parking lots, otherwise known as High Street and Washington Street during rush hour. We're so close to home after getting off the highway, yet so far away from being to our homes and our families. In fact, traffic during the day, it's a steady flow in these particular two areas that this article talks about. They're the town centers of Islington Center and of the High Street area. I think apartment buildings along these two particular areas would add many more cars, which would exacerbate the existing gridlock and traffic congestion that so many of us experience on a daily basis. There is also an existing lack of parking in these two particular business districts. These are robust, densely populated residential neighborhoods directly abutting these two business areas. And there's a lot of foot traffic from people who are wanting to visit Morrison, Little League Field, CVS, the library, restaurants, the yoga studio, the post office, the nursery school. And if you want retail to thrive, particularly a lot of the new retail that's going in and the new developments discussed at Islington Center, you need parking so that residents can actually frequent the businesses and allow that retail to thrive. Apartment buildings will bring many more cars to these areas and many more cars than the designated parking that's going to be provided. Of course, friends and family, any visitors that they have will want to park somewhere, and they should be able to. But they will be taking up the precious few existing spots that many of us try to find on a daily basis, and I just wanted to call that out as my major concern.
Okay. Other comments? Ma'am, you've no... Okay, over here. Please come to the microphone. You need to move closer to the microphone, please. Why don't you just use the other microphone for now until we can get that one working?
Steve Barrett. Steve Barrett, Two Thirty School Street. Thanks to the planning board for the very lengthy description of the history of this project. It's not terribly comforting. Doesn't assuage any of the problems with it, no matter how long you've taken planning it. I appreciate all the time you put into all of this planning and all the work that you put into the survey, but you don't seem to have paid any attention to the survey results or to what people had to say about it. I live kind of real close to the heart of this, and it affects me, and I look around at my neighbors who I probably don't know as well as I should. But there's one thing I know about a lot of them is that they made, for the most part, some pretty big sacrifices and worked pretty hard to get those houses to be able to live in Westwood. And for a lot of us, a lot of those people, that house is a big piece of their retirement plan. And when I look at what's going to happen to the value of houses in Islington, and not just on School Street, but on the ten, twenty, thirty, forty streets around Islington Square, when this project is completed and when the rest of Islington Square and the rest of that two-block center looks like the new building that's just gone up across from Roach Brothers and is occupied by at least forty apartment units, probably about a hundred new residents, and probably about a dozen new businesses if they're able to make it work financially, and all of that traffic is going to outlet within a two-block radius of the center of town. And at the center of that intersection is Morrison Park and the fire station. Now, what's a fire station need to do? They've got to be able to get out of there quickly, don't they? The quality of the buildings that are being put up really bothers me. When I look at what's happened to Dedham Square, I shake because I grew up in Dedham. It's where I was born and raised. I was born on Hyde Park, raised in Dedham. It means something to me to look at buildings in Dedham that make me feel like it's a rainy day when the sun is out. I want this town to be what it was when we bought into it. And yes, we do need places that people can afford to live in. We do need apartment settings for people. But Highland Glen and Westwood Glen don't interfere with the traffic. They don't create safety issues. And we can create other things in this town with a little work and a little creativity that actually make life better for everybody. This plan doesn't do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna recognize you. Yes, ma'am. You name an address, please.
Marissa Recor, One Twenty-six Pine Lane. I agree with the traffic issue, but something else that I think we're also kind of ignoring, particularly with the mixed-use buildings, is the public safety issue, and we need to look no further than University Station. And we've heard about all of the wonderful tax benefits that University Station has provided, and I am very thankful for the reduction in my taxes. However, if we look at page six in the book that everyone has been provided, University Station, it talks about the increase in the public safety calls that both the fire and the police departments have noted that University Station has brought with it, and that, you know, they're going to need to continue to look at this and understand its future impact on the town's operational budget. And I think when you look at the size of the proposed projects that they're looking to develop on Washington and High Street, that also needs to be considered in addition to the traffic issue, is the public safety issues, and things of that nature, in addition to the impact that these really large structures are going to have on our small-town feel. And I do issue a challenge to the planning board. I think there are other places, other sites, where we can have these developments that will bring these needed mixed-use places that will not have the impact that these particular areas are going to have on traffic. I think University Station kind of proves that. It has obviously some issues with public safety that we're going to have to continue to look at, but it's not having the impact on traffic that these two areas are going to have on the residents.
Okay. Wait. I'm going to ask you, actually ask you to wrap up your comments, and I'm going to ask people to speak to new items so that we can continue our work here. Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm Brian Arhern, and I live at Thirty-eight Beacon Street, which is one street removed from Washington Street in Islington. I've been there for twenty-four years, and I'd just like to say I'm one of those that is very happy, having seen for twenty of those years Islington the way it looked. I am much happier with the way it looks now. I may not be, there may be some of my neighbors that don't agree, but I know that my family is very happy in what we've seen happen. I'd like to thank the planning board and Nora for the work that they've done, especially with what the original proposal was now that I see it and what we've ended up with, I'm very happy with. And I think with, in terms of traffic, it's sad if we can't define what we want to do with our neighborhood in Islington and turning that into a village because of most of the traffic which has passed through from other towns. So I think that we should really think about what we want to do with our neighborhood and not, and then we can address, certainly we have to address aesthetics, we have to address traffic, and that is exactly what I think the planning board has done so far in considering things there, and I hope, you know, that they will give very thoughtful consideration to any other proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Raymond Aglegob. I live in Fourteenth Fourth Place. Full disclosure, I'm in Islington. I too appreciate the work of the planning board, and I appreciate the need to bring in more revenue for the town. However, what has been proposed for this area is simply too much, too fast. We have not yet seen what the development that is currently being constructed on Washington Street is going to bring in terms of business, in terms of residences. And the, I understand that the current zoning laws have allowed for this, for this kind of development, this flexible use. However, there isn't enough structure behind it to prevent us from getting, the same thing everyone else has pointed out, which is too big, too much traffic, too many residents. There just needs to be some control on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael Kraft, Thirty Coach Lane. I'm here as an individual, but I also serve as the chairman of the Westwood Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee, but I am speaking in my own personal capacity. First, I want to just say that I am standing in opposition to this article. I think that the town has spent a great deal of time and put together a very well-conceived village development. This is a golden opportunity. The ICTF did a great job of planning this out. I believe the planning board and the other committees, including this body, will do a great job of vetting out the traffic concerns. We've already heard about who rents in this town. There've been a number of slides about the types of rentals that we have. They are typically expensive, and they're typically geared to the elderly population. They don't take into consideration a number of people who would like to rent in this town, who are among us, who are people who don't want to live in a five-bedroom home anymore, who are people who can't afford to buy in the town but have family here but want to be here with others who they love. I also heard about the commercial tax base and the fact that we have limited amounts of space that can be developed for commercial. Prior to living in Westwood, my family lived in Milton. It seemed every single year we were dealing with a Prop Two-and-a-Half override because the commercial tax base was so small in comparison to the residential and what the needs were. So I also understand that with respect to this proposal, the developer of the project has offered some very substantial financial incentives to the town in order to bring this about. Those incentives may be taken off the table if this doesn't go through. So in conclusion, I think that this project will raise our property values, will raise the value of our town, and again, I recommend against the article.
Thank you. Okay, we are, I'm going to limit folks' comments to two minutes, and I am going to ask people only to state new items for consideration before this town meeting. Please proceed.
Linda FitzHenry, Fifty-seven Brookfield Road. My first comment is in reference to that. I don't think threats from a developer are why we should allow him to build whatever he wants. But I've come to these meetings for two years, and the initial sketch, yes, cosmetically it's changed, but every special waiver that was requested was granted. So all the discretionary powers that the planning board had to limit the size of the overall building and force it to be smaller for that lot, they were not used. And I think that's what caused Ellen and Debbie to look at this, is because we've tried for two years going to meetings and task force, making ourselves heard, and when all is said and done, the building that was presented at the preliminary meeting in 2015 is nearly identical, other than the gray clapboard, to what's going up there. It's not that much smaller. It's all the things they could have used and listened to us, they didn't. So I think that's why this came about after two years of fighting.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Greenberg. I'm going to ask you to limit your clapping so that we can get through the debate. It is really important to hear what everyone is saying here tonight, and I need to move the discussion along. So please do be respectful of everybody who is speaking. Thank you, Mr. Greenberg.
Yes, Richard Greenberg, Twenty Cobey Street. My problem is not with the concept, it's with the execution. In the slides that they showed, they talked about the Coburn School and what a success that was because there's apartments above it, and quite frankly, while it is much nicer and so on, it's really not a whole lot different than it was before, as opposed to the one in Islington, which is totally different and massive by comparison to what it was. In addition, what we're doing here is we're basically, the developer, they're taking every possible square inch they can without consideration to the fact of what happens after that. You have twelve one-bedroom apartments, a chiropractor, and a dentist's office in a building that has twenty-four parking spaces. Okay? So now you have people that live there that need to park, you have people that work there that need to park. Where are the people that have to go there going to park? Have you been to Islington Pizza recently to try, or the post office to try and get through that little area with your car? Okay? It's really tough to do. And I'm not even talking about the traffic on Washington Street, which is a function of a lot of other things as well. I'm not against the new CVS. I think it'll be awesome. But we don't need to take every square inch of that parcel where Cafe Diva is now, build a CVS and say, okay, by the way, you're going to park across the street, or you're going to park in the municipal lot, which isn't big enough for everything that's going there. If we're going to build these new buildings, that's great, and they look great, and certainly the improvements of where the post offices look awesome. But we need to realize that we can't take every square inch of land and just build up and out and then not have any place to put the people that want to go there. That's part of the problem. So that's what I've seen.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Prevettiera.
Thank you. My name is Joe Prevettiera. I'll be brief. I am in favor of Article Twenty-two and Twenty-three. I'm not going to confuse you with facts. I want you to just consider one concept when you vote for this. As a lifelong resident of Westwood, as one who grew up in Islington with only a handful of apartments, I am truly confused how someone can say there won't be a change in the character or the lifestyle of that community when you go from a handful of apartments to forty apartments within two years. I don't see how, I can't conceive that happening and not destroying the character.
Thank you. Yes.
Eugene Rocklansky of Five St. Dennis Drive. I grew up here. I moved back here recently and bought a house. When I say I'd really love to see Westwood grow in a healthy way, I mean it. There's been a lot of thought that's gone into how to develop Islington, and I greatly appreciate it. I think the one thing that bothers me is that the presentation that we had from Nora was a bit of a filibuster because the town's in the middle of, no, no, wait, because the town's in the middle of instituting a zoning freeze so that everything that was discussed, what we vote on, will actually have no impact on. So what are we actually going to vote on now? We're going to vote on the rest of High Street, and we're going to vote on the rest of Washington Street. And there, we'll actually have a lot less control of what goes up because we're not partnering with the developer. There are no public lands there to try to coerce them into building something that might be half-decent or for them to push back on us and have, get something that we don't want. The vote is really, do you want to allow a fair amount of residential on top of maybe some business that may or may not thrive to run along the rest of those streets? And there, we'll have very little control, and that's been admitted by the selectmen in town meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hertz.
Hello. George Hertz, Ten Rock Middle Road. I'm a member of the Finance Commission, and I've served on the Islington Task Force. And I think tonight we've heard some very intense and sometimes emotional arguments from both the proponents and the opponents of this particular article. And I've given this a lot of thought. Let me try and narrow the issues in terms of what I think we're dealing with. Westwood clearly has a desperate need for affordable housing, in part for young adults, traditional and single-parent families, professionals, recent college graduates, and our senior citizens. Affordable housing clearly would include starter homes, but I think we all understand that that's almost an oxymoron in a town like Westwood. So what are the alternatives? There are going to be condominiums, there are going to be apartments, and senior living options for both existing and future residents we would like to see moving to this town. At the same time, there needs to be a balance, and having sat through many public hearings at both the planning board, the Finance and War and Commission, and eighteen months of work on the Islington Task Force, I think we need to be sensitive to the needs of our residents in both Islington and the High Street corridors of Westwood. This is an extremely important issue. You know, we use the issue village as a concept when we talk about Islington especially, and I understand that. But the, what is the purpose of the FMUOD, or flexible multiple-overuse districts? I think flexibility is the key word. That tool will give, has given the planning board the necessary tools to work with residents and, yes, the business community to address and meet these needs. We have a lot of undevelopment, basically abandoned property... We have a lot of undevelopment, basically abandoned property in Westwood, especially in the Islington station, and I do not think it's a good approach for the town to let that continue as is. What does this particular petition article do? It's going to have a chilling effect on the town's ability to encourage and stimulate appropriate development in both Islington and the High Street area. And I think it probably may have serious consequences for the town's commercial tax base. Besides, this article will eliminate the appropriate and necessary need for affordable residential units coming to Westwood. You know, I want to address a very sensitive issue, and it's been an underlying tone at a lot of meetings that I've attended, and it involves apartments. I grew up in Holyoke, Massachusetts. Half my life there was in apartments in a two-family home. My wife and I, after we graduated from college, spent 12 years living in apartments in Brookline, in Watertown, in Newton, and in Boston. And, you know, I think that apartments have met and need to continue to meet-
Mr. Hertz, you're going to have to wrap it up because we are-
I will in a second, okay?
There will be no comments, please.
All right, let me just close by saying the following-
We have had many people who have gone over two minutes, so please, let's-
I know I have. The five members of the Planning Board, the 15 members of the Finance and Warren Commission, the 18 members of the Islington Task Force have held numerous public hearings over the last 18 months, and I think they have recommended initially and now would oppose this article. Going forward, I encourage residents to attend the Planning Board, FINCOM, and Task Force meetings to express your concerns and work with these boards to influence the type of development you want. But at the end of the day, the village we live in is the town of Westwood, and we need to keep it open to both existing and new residents.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Is there someone, are you in line to speak? Okay. No, this time, I've just recognized someone to speak.
Rupshen Sheery, 1 Park Circle. I also had the privilege of serving on the Islington Task Force Committee. One of the projects that we undertook as a task force committee was to solicit research from the community in response to research that we received from the developers for the pros and cons of multi-use developments in town centers. And two pieces of research emerged as being very credible, one from MIT and one from Tufts. And what they showed as a kind of a common theme is a lot of the concerns that we've heard tonight, that these types of developments impact everything from our schools, to the traffic, to crime, and last but not least, property values. And across the board, the studies also found that after the developments had been completed, those fears subsided and ultimately never materialized. So as we look towards our town centers and what we want them to look at, I would encourage you to keep that in mind. Change is painful, and oftentimes it's pretty scary, but oftentimes it's important that we not let our imaginations run away. On Park Circle, many of you may not know it, it's right off Washington Street, across from Allen Gas, which has been vacant. I look at an empty gas station and a purple empty printing press that's been like that, as I understand it, for many years now, with no prospects of development. There's a preacher got up in front of his congregation and said, "How many of you here want to go to heaven?" Everybody raised their hands. Now, and he asked them, "How many of you here want to die?" Point is, everybody wants revitalization. If the town center could have been revitalized under the existing zoning bylaws, it would have been done so many years ago. The FMUOD that came out to allow multi-use was the impetus that we need in order to bring the developers' interest to the town, because those rental units, whether we like them or not, are an important economic component to help make development attractive and economically feasible for developers. My last point is the zoning freeze that's underway really, most likely, will end up resulting in the current project that's being discussed being completely unimpacted by this Article 22. That project, you'll all have the opportunity to vote on at a future board meeting if it gets to that point. This, tonight, this vote should not be focused on that project. It should be focused on the article, which is a very broad stroke that removes the option for any type of residential units, whether it's rentals or condos, to help encourage development on High Street and the remainder of Washington Street. And I think what we need here is protection for the village feel, but that requires a scalpel, and what we're looking at in this article is a cudgel, and I'd encourage you to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfaff. Mr. Pfaff. I've recognized Mr. Pfaff.
Thank you. My name's Chris Pfaff from 534 Everett Street. For decades, there was no allowable residential use in local business A, which is High Street, and local business B, which is Islington. In local business B-zone, much of the buildings were owned by a single entity for decades. Redevelopment did not exist. To address the goals of the town's comprehensive plan of 2000, indicating a need for additional diversified housing, along with a stagnant developmental atmosphere, the Planning Board adopted FMUOD Zones 6 and 7. Once the FMUOD was added in Islington, and the Planning Board expressed its intention to expand the possible uses in this new overlay district to include residential uses, a developer purchased the properties on Washington Street and School Street with the hope of redeveloping Islington. The goal of an FMUOD is to attract better and more comprehensive developments to areas in town that have been identified as being in need of redevelopment. Since our zoning was adopted after World War II, this was not, there was not an allowed residential use in this section of Islington. The byproduct of this was stagnant redevelopment. Simply put, nobody wanted that land because there was no money to be made in redevelopment. Once mixed-use development was embraced by the Planning Board as a possibility in our town centers, a developer showed interest and purchased the property. The residential component of the FMUOD 6 and 7 is a vital tool for the Planning Board. It's important to remind people that building residences in these zones is not a by-right use. Building residences in these zones requires a special permit from the Planning Board. This process gives the Planning Board authority to craft and design a project so it best fits into the surrounding neighborhood. If a project instead is brought forward to develop a by-right use, then the Planning Board has far less influence on the look and feel of the buildings. In other words, if a developer builds using the underlying local business B zoning, he can build just about whatever he wants. Removing this tool from the Planning Board's toolbox will drastically affect the quality of projects brought before the board. Or perhaps its removal will keep any redevelopment opportunities for Islington or High Street from materializing for years to come. We just don't know. Westwood needs to keep moving forward in all aspects of town life. Our schools, our fire, our police departments, our housing, our commercial developments, all need to be forward-moving in order to maintain the quality of life we've come to expect in Westwood. Removing the residential component to these FMUOD zones will severely hinder the town's ability to attract comprehensive developments and also lessens the Planning Board's ability to work with developers to create the best projects for our town.
Thank you, Mr. Pfaff. We have one more speaker, and then I will close the, go ahead. We will move the question after the speaker.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Trevor Lobeson, and I'm the vice chairman of the Planning Board. I'm also a resident at 375 Clapboard Tree Street in Westwood. I have a couple of comments, and I also have a proposed amendment to Article 22, which I will hand in written form now to the desk, although I know she already has it. First of all, I want to thank the audience for joining us tonight. There are many, many, many town meetings where we wish there were more people getting involved, so we can hold applause to the end, but I applaud you for coming out tonight and staying so late. On May 1st today, at 6:15, the Planning Board met to prepare for town meeting and discuss possible amendments to Articles 22. The Planning Board maintains its position supporting the indefinite postponement of this article, but proposes the following amendment to the petition article as an alternative to address the petitioner's concerns without completely eliminating the multifamily housing use, but revises the amount of housing in each structure.
Well, before we have any discussion about the amendment, we need to make the amendment.
Sure.
Someone needs to second the amendment, but first, we need to find the amendment within order.
Okay. So, how do I, how do I actually make this amendment aside from what I just said?
Okay, is there a, is there a visual on this?
There is, yes. I have a, there's a visual, I think that's-
So you have moved the amendment?
I have moved, yes.
And is there a second to the amendment?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to explain the amendment so everybody knows what-
Thank you, and I apologize.
Is under discussion?
Yeah, I do, there is a visual presentation. Is that available to be queued up? It's very, very brief, I swear. Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay. I'll go fast. The zoning bylaw currently limits the multifamily housing to use to 50% of the total gross floor area of a project. The petition article that's before us removes the housing use from High Street to Washington Street town centers, allowing only commercial uses to be allowed if approved. The Planning Board is now proposing an amendment that changes the article to restrict the multifamily housing uses in FMUOD 6 and 7, the High and Washington Street centers, to be no more than 50% of gross floor area instead of project area of any individual structures. We have a few slides here that describe quickly what this means in terms of, in terms of the forms of the buildings you may see. The slide shows what the bylaw currently allows, which is residential use up to 50% of a project area. Residential use is shown in blue, commercial in peach, and the project area is a bold line beneath with the examples of A, B, C, and D, where you may see multiple buildings on a single site similar to what you see being built now. You might see a very tall building that's all commercial, like you see in example C, and you probably get the gist of the others. What this slide represents is what the petition article, or I'm sorry, what the, yes, what the Article 22 would produce potentially on these sites. The slide shows what would be allowed by this petition if approved. Only commercial uses would be allowed, shown in peach, in these four examples of varying-sized buildings of all commercial structure, all commercial space. This final housing slide, or diagram slide, shows what would be allowed with the amended language with residential limit to 50% of each building. Residential use is in blue and can be no more than half of the building it is within. And what you should note here is the reduction in height and mass that these propositions would possibly produce unless, unless the building was built as a strictly commercial project, as seen in example 3. This fifth slide shows what the current bylaw allows, which is a mixed use with residential up to 50% of a project by special permit. As you can see, the current project is depicted in the upper left, and some other examples are shown on the other two areas, another of which is the Coburn School here in town. The sixth slide shows what is allowed by right, a use that is allowed without specific relief or a special permit from the Planning Board, which are buildings that contain all commercial uses. And you will recognize many of these buildings, some of these buildings from around town. This next slide shows what would be allowed with this amended Article 22, the amendment that we're proposing tonight, for mixed-use buildings that would be permitted by special permit, limiting housing to no more than 50% of a building, most likely seeing two-story buildings with one-floor residential above. You see some images, we actually worked together to create these, to put these precedent images together as part of the process of developing the look and feel of the current building being built in Islington as we speak. The exact wording of the proposed amended article is shown in red, restricting the amount of housing per structure rather than completely eliminating it. The Planning Board maintains its original recommendation for indefinite postponement. The revised language has not been fully vetted, as only reviewed earlier this evening, but proposes this language as an alternative to the petitioner's motion to address a petitioner's concern for overdevelopment of housing in the Village Centers while also providing the continued economic incentive for redevelopment with mixed use. Thank you very much.
Discussion on the amendment which has been made and seconded, Mrs. Hyde.
I want to address the complexity of what we're dealing with right now. The proposed amendment genuinely, I believe, is really the Planning Board trying to say we want to do something to maybe have consideration given to the proponents' articles, but maybe not to the full degree. And I commend them for that, but I want to say to you, and with all due respect to my colleagues on the Planning Board, I think we should vote to turn down the amendment as proposed. Let's go back to the proponents' articles as we've been discussing, but let's keep in mind that the Planning Board is actually trying to extend an olive branch to resolve the different feelings we have about these zoning articles. So again, I'm not being critical of them, but I am saying I think it would be best if we move quickly to not act on the amendment, defeat it, so we can go back to the articles and let's take a vote. Thank you.
Other discussion on the amendment. Seeing no discussion?
No.
I'm sorry, where? We have someone in back here, yes.
Melinda Mutaya from 132 Village Circle. I've attended planning board meetings, and I've heard the residents' concerns, and the Planning Board has been very slow to incorporate the residents' comments, and you can see a last-minute amendment. Why did we have to come to this? Why wasn't this done earlier when they are in the Planning Board meeting sessions?
Thank you, sir. Other discussion about the amendment, please, and let's stick with the amendment at this point. Yes, Ms. Prevotera.
I actually agree with the gentleman who just spoke. It is rather a late reaction. However, I disagree with the chairman of the selectmen because I don't see it as just an olive branch. I see it as acknowledgement of the problems with this existing FMOUD. And so I think that this should be considered and not just dismissed, like it appears Nancy Hyde wants to do.
Okay, we're not personalizing here, and I will not tolerate comments directed at any one person who has previously spoken. Am I clear on that? This is a civil conversation. It is a difficult discussion, and it is a very complicated motion. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion, the amendment vote is a majority vote. Those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the amendment, please say no.
No.
The amendment is defeated. We now return to the underlying article, which, as I said before, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
We will need to have a standing count. This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 22, please stand, and will the counters please assemble to This is, this is a vote in favor of Article 22. To be very clear, those folks who are standing are in favor of Article 22 as written. Those folks standing- Those folks standing are in favor of Article 22. We have disposed of indefinite postponement. We have disposed of the amendment. Right now, if you are in favor of Article 22, you are standing. Please make sure that you're standing still so the voter, the vote counters can get your vote. Okay, all of those folks who are standing can sit. Thank you. And would the people who are voting no on Article 22, please stand? Again, I'm going to ask people to stay where they are so the vote counters can get an accurate vote count. Okay, folks can sit while we tally the vote. Okay, again, this required a two-thirds vote. There were 233 yeses and 188 no's. There is not a two-thirds vote to, so Article 22 fails. Article 23. Yes, Mr. Ahern? Do you have a point of order? We have a motion to reconsider Article 22. Is there a second? Is there a discussion about the motion for reconsideration? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of reconsideration, say aye. The motion for reconsideration fails. I'm getting comments from the peanut gallery here. And we will move on to Article 22, 23. To see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.5 of the Westwood zoning bylaw to remove footnote marker one. This is, again, a petitioner article. It does, it is before the town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's motion for indefinite postponement. Is there a second? I'm in the middle of a motion here, and there's a second to the motion. We are on Article 23. It's 10:45, and we can continue at the moderator's discretion. Article 23. Is there any discussion on the FinCom's motion for indefinite postponement?
Hello, my name is Debbie Conient, 21 Strasser Avenue. Article 23 has to do with the removal of a footnote that was applied to all seven FMUODs back in 2016. This footnote allows for the minimum project area to include contiguous lots and lots separated by a roadway or railroad right-of-way. This article needs to be discussed and voted upon. One of the impetuses for this article was that the building located at 317 to 323 Washington Street under construction did not have this minimum square footage to build his building. Because of this footnote, he was allowed to combine the square footage of the lot that the Islington Pizza Building is on and combine it with the lots next door that only had approximately .42 acres that required a one-acre minimum in our district. So even though the freestanding pizza building was there, they allowed a 5,000-square-foot building, approximately 5,000-square-foot building, to be built on a .42-acre lot. I think that we need to think carefully about what we want to see happen to our town centers, sorry. We are going to have our town centers filled with buildings of that monstrosity. They're not going to look like the Coburn School. What we're going to get is the building that you see right now. And the important thing to consider about this article is that it can be, these lots can be combined, whether in separate or private ownership. So people can group together and combine their lots and build straight down both sides. And you have to ask yourself, what is the vision that we had of our town when we moved here? We moved here for the quiet, charming, quaint character of the town. And the fact that they will allow a freestanding building, square-footage lot, to be combined to let someone achieve the minimum project requirement is just wrong. And this article, when it was originally voted in last year, was specifically for FMUOD one. And I think that we need to discuss this and show you why and the rationales that were given as to why it was applied to all seven FMUOD districts. And if we're not giving that opportunity, we are sacrificing our town centers to the benefits of developers who will continue to build these monstrosities on small lots that can't even accommodate parking and will require underground parking to fulfill their requirements. We need to remember that we have not let, had our voices be heard on any of these arguments, and it's time that our voices be heard. We, the residents, make up this town, and we need to make sure that we keep the town the way we envisioned it. So I ask you to support us in not indefinitely postponing this article.
Other conversation on, again, this is before the Finance Commission's motion for indefinite
Article 23 seeks to eliminate coordinated development in our town centers. The existing bylaw was designed to encourage coordinated development of aging and deteriorated properties in both town centers and throughout the town in all of the flexible multiple-use overlay districts. The existing bylaw provides the flexibility the planning board needs to encourage applications, to encourage appropriate character-fitting redevelopment of our town centers. The petition article would prohibit applications involving not just properties that are separated by a street, but two parcels that are adjacent and owned by the same property owner. There are many projects throughout town that contain more than one parcel. Right here on this side of town, we have the Stagecoach Plaza where Kamelas is. That's a project that involves three separate parcels. All were considered by the planning board as a single project, as the planning board does in all projects it reviews. Hogan Tire is another one that was recently approved for redevelopment. That involves two parcels. The parcels are uniquely connected to each other, and coordinated development comes forward. In the Islington Center project that's been discussed much tonight, 301 323 Washington Street, it was a coordinated project. It involved renovation of one building and replacement of two existing mixed-use buildings with a new, larger mixed-use building. The planning board was able, by combining the parcels, to come up with a coordinated development where traffic, parking, circulation, landscaping, and architectural context of the buildings are coordinated. If not for this provision in the bylaw, then development would be discoordinated. It would be looking at each parcel individually and having haphazard development throughout town. That is not the type of planning that we work so hard to allow. The proposed petition article would prevent well-planned, coordinated redevelopment. It would also introduce questions in the interpretation of other sections of the bylaw. This footnote was added last year. Keep in mind, it was added after the 301 323 Washington Street project was approved. That was approved last April. This footnote was added in May at the last town meeting. It was added at the request of special counsel, who was in the midst of settling an old lawsuit related to the Westwood Station project, related to takings that occurred in, I believe, 2007. Property owners requested this footnote be placed on the FMUOD section for clarity. The planning board's practice has always been, in FMUOD, in site plan review, in subdivision review, it has always been to consider coordinated projects involving multiple parcels, whether contiguous or effectively contiguous. A request was made as part of that settlement agreement to put that into the bylaw. That was done, it was done fairly last minute, and I think if we rethought it, we may say the bylaw footnote was never needed in the first place because that's always been our practice. But what this petition article does is it doesn't just remove the footnote, it applies it specifically to FMUOD one through five. That takes it away from six and seven. That means that the Washington Street and High Street districts, properties within those, will be treated differently than every other property everywhere in town. That would result in a negative effect on our town districts. I implore you to please defeat this article. Recommend, the motion is for indefinite postponement that is currently up. If you want to see continued coordinated development, you should vote in favor of indefinite postponement.
Okay, further discussion? Yes.
Eugene Draklanski, 5 St. Dennis Drive. It's getting late, we should wake up a little bit. Let's be quite frank, we're not talking about a poor sealership, we're not talking about a Hogan Tire. We are talking about two districts, these are our town centers. We want the buildings to be small, non-contiguous, and preserve the feel of what the Westwood Town Center should be. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Go ahead. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Nada Milisavlevich Fabrizio, and I live at 32 Webster Street in Westwood. Ms. Moderator, I understand that we're talking about Article 23. Here, can people hear me? I don't know just what happened with Article 22. I didn't have a visual, and... I didn't have a visual, and am I the only one in the room that doesn't know what happened with Article 22?
Article 22 was defeated. It did not get a two-thirds vote in favor.
But I got that at the end, but I guess my point is, we were voting on whether we want an indefinite postponement or we're going to vote on the article. Then we had residents and everybody speaking, and then we went back to it, and it just wasn't on the visual, and I wasn't sure how I was supposed to vote. I don't think it was stated clearly on what, I mean, once you're off the subject for an hour because you're listening to debates, it was confusing.
I thought I made it clear when I announced what a yes vote meant and what a no vote meant, and I know that you asked for clarification, and I again made the announcement to the town meeting members. It required a two-thirds vote, which is a high vote, and it was, did not receive a two-thirds vote, so.
And I understand that.
So Article 22 did not pass.
But I think if there's a visual up there, it helps.
Sometimes when you're going through a town meeting, we just have to go with the flow, not knowing what is going to happen.
I don't think that's acceptable. I think as a town meeting, us in here, you need to know what's going on.
I appreciate your comment, but we will need to move on.
Okay, I just want to make that clear, that I didn't understand what was going on.
It is very clear to me, and I apologize for that. I do try to make it very clear. Other comments on the motion for indefinite postponement for Article 23?
Brian Clinton, 44 Baker Street. If I'm to understand this footnote that was added in May of 2016, I think it's pretty reckless to suggest that all development in Westwood prior to May of 2016 was haphazard. I moved to this neighborhood community last year, and I think that this should be debated tonight. It's crazy not to be. You are going to change the feel of this community, and I moved here with some of those closed buildings in Islington. People aren't not coming to Westwood. I just felt I had to say that.
Other comments. Not seeing any, we will, I'll call the motion. Again, this is on the Finance and Warrant Commission's motion for indefinite postponement. A yes means you agree with indefinite postponement. A no means you don't agree that this should be indefinitely postponed, and you want to attend to the underlying article. All those in favor of indefinite postponements, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I believe we will need a standing vote, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please stand. Again, if you are in favor of indefinite postponement, that is not taking up this article this evening, you will stand. Okay, everybody can sit down. And now those who are opposed to indefinite postponement may stand. Again, if you are opposed to indefinite postponement, please stand, which means that you want Okay, everybody can be seated. On the motion for indefinite postponement, 161 people voted yes, 197 people voted no. The motion for indefinite postponement does not carry, it fails. The motion for indefinite postponement has failed. We are now entertaining a motion to take up Article 23. So moved, is there a second? There is a second. Is there any discussion on Article 23? Sorry, we need a planning board report. Planning board report first.
This is Chris Pfaff. On April 11th, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that the town meeting vote in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 23 as presented in the warrant.
Debbie Conant, 21 Strasser Ave. So, as you know, I've already explained that the Article 23 has to do with the removal of the footnote from the flexible multi-use overlay districts 6 and 7, which are High Street and Washington Street. And the article has to do with the minimum project area being able to apply contiguous parcels or parcels separated by a railroad, or roadway or railroad right-of-way, I'm sorry, it's late, that are effectively contiguous. Oh, I don't have the. As I had stated earlier, this initial article was brought to vote back in May of 2016. And if I can just bore you for a moment and read you the article itself. It states, "To see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw, Section 9.5.9.1, minimum project area, under the flexible multi-use overlay district FMUOD 1, which is University Avenue." It is not all seven FMUODs that it was applied to. "From 30 acres to 10 acres by amending Section 9.5.9.1 to read as follows, and to add a footnote to the minimum project area to read as follows and renumber subsequent footnotes, sorry, as appropriate." When the annual town meeting results were published, Article 29 stated, "Amendments to project area in the FMUOD 1, again, University Avenue, passed by a two-third vote in favor at the 2016 annual town meeting." So we took some pause here and asked them, why was it applied to all seven FMUODs? So we did a little bit of research, and we found that there were some differing opinions as to why this happened. The first was, as the town stated appropriately, that it had to do with a case settlement with a property owner down in University Avenue, and the only way the case settlement could occur with the town was if Article 29 passed. And that was to decrease the FMUOD minimum project area from 30 acres to 10 acres. There was no implication that this was to be applied to all seven FMUOD areas, specifically 5, 6, and 7, which we are here about tonight. The second explanation that we received of why the footnote was put in was back in, I believe it was 2016 or late 2015, where it was mentioned that there was a pending FMUOD permit on Washington Street that needed clarification of the zoning. And that was why the footnote was applied to 6 and 7. And then the third explanation was that the footnote was added because this is something we do all the time. And I think that we need, as I stated earlier, as to why we should discuss this, is that the town centers are quaint with character and charm. And if the footnote is not removed, then this is going to be interrupted. Presently, this is our town center, and yes, it does need some redevelopment, if you may, or some upgrades. But if we continue to allow the contiguous parcels, irregardless of if they're side-by-side or across the street from one another, they're going to still allow for monstrosities of buildings to be placed. This is a graphic artist rendition of what could potentially be built there. This is by combining lots side-by-side or across the street from one another. And it is humorous to look at, but since 2011, we have had over 120 pages of zoning bylaw changes. This could happen, and it's not just Islington Center that's at risk. Washington, High Street right now, on the planning board table, are some recommendations to make some more zoning changes and to change the zoning setbacks, the front setbacks, to zero, which means that you can line buildings on both sides up to the sidewalk. And again, these can be in common ownership or separate ownership. So we are not safe with this footnote at all. This is what we could potentially get. Again, a graphic artist rendition. This cannot, I will say though, if they allow these lots to be combined, like they did with the Islington Pizza Lot, you have a freestanding building, and you allow it to be combined with the lot next door, this could potentially happen with underground parking all along High Street and Washington Street. Reality, though, is this, this is that new building on Washington Street. This is that almost 5,000-square-foot building on a .42-acre lot that never should have been approved. And just to make a note here, they still did not meet the minimum project area for this project to be allowed. They were given a waiver. So irregardless of the combination of the Islington Pizza Lot, 317, 317R, and 323, they still couldn't make the minimum project area. And if we don't stop this now, this is what our backyards are going to look like. The other thing that I need you to take a look at is the governmental structure. We have been hit by barriers trying to make changes with the zoning bylaws for months. We have, our town meeting right here are the ones who are supposed to be making the decisions. Everyone else is below us. They're supposed to be our voices, but our voices have been being met with deaf ears. We need to make sure that we preserve Westwood and we preserve the town that we moved into. We need to make sure that we stop this type of building. And again, we're not interrupting the process. A builder can still go before the planning board and ask for two adjacent lots to be confined as one. That will not change. It's a more laborious process, sure, but it can be done. We're trying to prevent this from happening and this from being in our backyards. And I ask you to please consider voting for this article to pass so we can save our town, save it for our families and for our future children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Okay. Other comment? At this point, we are at a late hour, so we will have shortened comments. Yes, ma'am?
Me?
Yes.
On the grounds that we are at a late hour, I don't know whether this is appropriate at this time, but I'd like to move that we adjourned. at this time, but I'd like to move that we adjourn until tomorrow. This discussion will probably take some time.
No, we can't, the moderator won't entertain that motion at this time. Nora Lochnean.
Nora Lochnean, 74 Sterling Road. I just want to just correct a couple of quick misstatements, and then I will move on and let you vote. This copy of the article that was proposed in 2016, the first portion of this article was advertised, it was brought to the Finance Commission as early as December 2015, it was advertised in January 2016. Hearings were held before the planning board in February 2016 and March 2016. At all of those stages, the article consisted only of the first section, the section that called for changing FMUOD-1, project area, from 30 acres to 10 acres. This article was introduced in that format, because that's what was being discussed in the settlement talks I mentioned earlier for the University Avenue property. That's how the article was written, that's how it was advertised, that's how it was discussed in the hearing. It was at the last minute, before that hearing resulted in a final recommendation to town meeting, that our special counsel came back and said, "In our settlement agreements, they asked for one more thing." They asked for not just changing the project area from 30 to 10 acres, but also adding this footnote. They asked the planning board, "Would you please do that, so we could settle the suit in the town's favor?" The planning board agreed to do that. They added Part 2, which is affecting the minimum project area with that footnote. As I said earlier, had we had more time to discuss it and fully vet it, we probably would have said no. We would have done without the footnote. However, that is not what the petitioner article proposes to do. It does not remove the footnote. It maintains the footnote in FMUOD-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. It only removes it from 6 and 7. That creates confusion, and it specifically limits development in the town centers to disjointed and uncoordinated development. Next thing I'd like to correct are these artist renderings. This could never be built in the High Street or Washington Street area, nor could this. Both artist renderings fully exceed the zoning requirements. Buildings are limited to 36 feet in both of these zones. Whether they're commercial buildings, or whether they're all mixed-use buildings, the height limit is the same. These projects could never be built. You've seen what the planning board looked at for their first project in Washington Street. You've seen what was proposed. You've seen what they approved at University Station. You've seen what was proposed, you've seen what came out of it. This was a thoughtful project, allowing the planning board to consider coordinated development. I want to show you one other thing before I stop talking, and that is the types of developments that we have sealed with contiguous parcels. The Prime Dealerships, the Police Station, Hogan Tire, Stagecoach Plaza, the Shell Gas Station, just to name the most recent ones. I also want to show you the approval plan for 301 to 323 Washington Street. As you can see there, there are two buildings, but they are closely coordinated. They share a parking area, they share a circulation pattern, and they have landscaping that could not have taken place had they been separate projects. Please vote no on this article, and please allow the planning board to continue coordinated development in our town.
Ellen Rollins, 86 Green Hill Road. I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
We, we, we need to have an opportunity for everyone to be heard here. And so, I do believe there, we're rounding the bend on comment, but it really is important for everyone to be able to speak.
Mr. Pfaff.
Chris Pfaff, Everett Street. Allowing a project area to be considered by using neighborhood lots, whether divided by a railroad or a street, is a practice common within planning boards around the state of Massachusetts. Westwood has used this approach with the new Prime Dealerships, the new Shell Gas Station, Route 1, the Stagecoach Plaza, among others. It allows a greater opportunity for a comprehensive approach to designing a project. Developing with a one-lot-at-a-time approach results in the situation we have by the Dunkin' Donuts in Islington. Small, unattractive buildings that don't relate to their neighbors or the surrounding community. Further, as we've seen in this area in Islington, this approach to development often results in underutilized uses, eventually ending in the vacant building. For these reasons, the planning board would prefer to continue using this tool when appropriate, so it can be assured it has everything it needs to arrive at the best development possible for the town. Removing this footnote from FMUOD-6 and 7 bylaws will ensure development is piecemealed together, one lot at a time, with no continuity or comprehensive thought.
We are at this point going to wrap up our comments. Please only say new things. Please do not repeat. Name and address, please.
First of all, I wanted to ask everybody to recognize hard work which was done by the Finance and Warrant Commission. And it's not by the length of the presentation only, but as a result of voting about this particular issue. If you will look onto this great book, you will see that total majority of the recommendations were taken by Financial Board almost unanimously, with very rare exclusion, maybe one opposing. This one is the only one which had four members of the Financial and Warrant Commission opposed. Very first one from the all, which would be discussed, and very last one from the all, which would be discussed later. It's a great example for us that ideas, that previously made decisions, carved in stone, it's not quite correct. After all, all decisions which were taken last year, year before, they were changing existing order. And ability to recognize mistakes and correct them is a sign of adult person. Let's be adult.
Okay. You have spoken before, and you have spoken before. So unless you have something new to say, I'm going to move the question. Do you have something new to say?
I was going to ask if we could hear from some of the ThinkCom members who voted against, for us, against the, for the article. There was four opposed, there was, I forget the number, how many were opposed, and four were for us and for the article? So if we could hear from them as to what their thought process was?
Okay, that's up to them as to whether they want to speak or not, at this point. Okay, we, at this point, we will move the question. All those in favor of Article 23, and this will require a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of Article 23, that is the underlying article. We are no longer on indefinite postponement. We are voting on the article, Article 23 substantively. If your vote is yes, please stand. All those opposed to Article 23, please stand. Okay, you may be seated. The total vote count was 316. The yeses were 165, and the nos were 151. There is not a two-thirds vote in favor of Article 24, and therefore, 23, excuse me, Article 23. And therefore, Article 23 fails. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to accessory apartments. We need a planning board report that comes before the...
Point of order? Point of order? Point of order? I'm going to, point of order? I'd like to move we adjourn until tomorrow.
Yeah, I know. I know.
We agreed that this was only going to go on until about 10:45, and it's now 11:30?
Okay. I'm going to adjourn the meeting to tomorrow at 7:30 PM. I tried, folks, but there's important things ahead, and those things need to be dealt with. So we will meet here again tomorrow at 7:30 PM. And many thanks for all your participation. Please do come tomorrow night. We stand, is there a motion to adjourn to tomorrow evening at 7:30? Is there a, is there a second? We stand adjourned until tomorrow at 7:30. I did, I tried.